Yeah, I'm sure she'll join us. She was obviously just here previously. So I would like to call to order the September 15th, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting. We may we start off with a roll call.
Councilmember Raarback?
Here.
Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Here.
Mayor Eisen?
Here.
Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
Do you have a forum?
Excellent. And we will open it up to public forum.
If there are any members of the public that wish to speak on an item not on the agenda tonight, please use the Raise Your Hand feature.
And yeah, and oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
You will have three minutes to speak.
And as we go through that process, I just want to remind the public that this it's not, we are only here to talk about items on the agenda. These are good things to bring up so we're aware of, but we can't start a back and forth on these topics. We're not going to be answering any questions you have on these topics. We're, we're going to hear you. We appreciate you commenting. We're very excited to hear from the public and then we will move into the council.
And speakers, I will be using a timer and letting you know when you have 30 seconds to wrap up. And then once your time is complete. So our first speaker is Sue Rainieri. Sue, go ahead.
Thank you, Council, for letting me speak tonight. One of my greatest fears, aside from COVID, climate change, social unrest, wildfires, and the presidential election, is that coast side leadership will write this summer off as the perfect storm of events and will not learn anything from our collective experience over the last four months. If there is an environmentalist left on the city council, please take note of what the beach community and coast side environment was dealt with from Memorial Day madness through Labor Day. Take a bike ride down Redondo Beach Road. You can't help but be struck by the stench of urine as you approach the parking lot where there are no dumpsters or portable toilets. I have extensive footage of what Labor Day looked like. We made a comical YouTube video of rampant stop sign running at Kelly and Potter on Saturday, followed by a more serious sequence of videos of traffic congestion on Sunday. Neighborhoods were overrun and exceeded parking limits. An egress out of town was impacted through 11 o'clock on Sunday night. Of most concern is the lack of safe routes of travel. For those who live here, had any resident had a health emergency on Sunday evening, they'd be dead if they tried to seek care on their own. While none of us on the beach as residents, we're definitely stewards of this beautiful place. Some of us take that more seriously than others and have spent the summer trying to restore normalcy after one of our typical weekends. While there are no, while there are pleas to the public to speak up at council meetings, I've been doing that all summer to no avail. We couldn't even find our way to add portable toilets, given the increased number of tourists to the coast. Over the Labor Day holiday, I had the opportunity to speak with many visitors. They were stunned when I mentioned there were no toilets where they were going. Many had spent hours on 92 trying to get here and even more time being turned away from Poplar and Francis State Beaches. All they wanted to do was park, get out of their car, go to the bathroom, enjoy the beach. The experience was torturous for them and left them with no alternatives than to urinate in public. I think we can do better. Sadly, the only place there was parking was downtown in front of our local businesses. We're clearly not taking advantage of the opportunity to serve all these visitors and are not giving them an enjoyable experience and a reason to return. This summer has been a foreshadowing of what the coast side will continue to experience with climate change and other factors. The residents deserve a plan that ensures safe path to travel and environmental protection. I ask that this be taken as a serious initiative at upcoming council meetings. It's yet to be an agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Thanks, Sue. Our next speaker is Brett Turner. Brett, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council and staff, Sheriff and, and the public. My name is Brett Turner. I've been a fan of this city council. I, I stood with signs on street corners for the members when they were candidates. And with that background and backdrop in mind, it's with heavy heart that I appear here now to forward a petition for the resignation of City Manager Nizbet. And, and we're also asking for the termination, the resignation of Chief Health Officer Morrow. The petition has over 300 signatures, but we have no false hope here. We realize the council will be unmoved by the public outrage regarding the COVID issue and the beach closure issues. And it is highly unlikely that either Nizbet or Morrow will resign. But we still want to make it clear that there's been a lack of professionalism in the handling of the COVID matter and, and some breaches of the public trust that must be noted. We must do better here. The non-response of San Mateo County officials to the COVID crisis is the same plan that is a no-plan strategy on the federal level. We believe as the citizens of Half Moon Bay that we can do better than this and that now is the time for the council to question the city manager and others who failed to put health and safety first. The public helped on the Fourth of July and it went smooth. But Labor Day, we saw the vote and we were still confused by that. We're confused by the lack of county response as well. And just hope that we keep this on the forefront moving forward and, and make sure we're doing the best for the public erring on the side of health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
Our next speaker is Libby. Okay, it looks like Libby is using an older version of Zoom. Libby, I have to promote you to panelists to allow you to speak, so I'll ask you to please turn your video off. Thanks. And then if you'll unmute yourself, you can present your comments.
I apologize. This is actually Eric Hollister. I'm using my daughter's computer. Jessica, it's nice to see you in your child's room as well. Bless your heart. You're such a hard worker. I'd also like to thank the council and mayor for taking this, this call. And a special thanks to Captain Saul and Matthew Chittister for being here as well. And Bob, appreciate your time. You know what? Sue Rainieri pretty much nailed it. She completely encompassed the compassion and the, and the, and the intensity for which I've been speaking for the last few months, as well as Brett. We have tirelessly been fighting for this community. And unfortunately, I believe he, his, his message and my message have been lost in our deliveries, but I urge, urge, urge the community and the listening council members now to please heed the warnings that Sue is saying. Take, take, take a little listen to Brett, maybe even just with a grain of salt, but understand that our sincerity is there. We are scared for our community. I have Latino friends that are reporting higher cases of COVID than are being appeared in the San Mateo County website. As a matter of fact, an entire landscaping crew right now is, has come down with COVID and their families, as well as one of their wives and children that was recently born at Sanford Hospital. So I think this is stuff that we really need to consider, taking a stronger look at. I think we need to empower the Sheriff's Department and even some citizens with the ability to enforce our wishes. I do believe that not shutting down the city's beaches was a poor decision in that we did not put our foot down for the state and state parks. I live on Kelly, so I do believe that we would have been double, if not triple impacted. And I don't like that, but we can handle our own here at times. But again, I'd like to just reiterate what Sue said and I, you know, I truly appreciate your time. And I appreciate all the, all the negative feedback that you guys are taking in stride. I do believe that Dr. Scott Morrow should be removed. I'll leave my comment to the side about our current city manager. But I do believe that Dr. Morrow should be, be held accountable for all this and the ramifications that we're going to find out later here in weeks and months and even years to come. Thank you so much for your time, Jessica.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Our next speaker is Larry. Larry, go ahead. Do you unmute yourself?
Perfect. Here we go. Larry, it looks like you're unmuted, but I can't hear you. Jessica, can you hear him?
Okay, Larry, if you'd like to speak again, please raise your hand again. Our next speaker is Pedro Quintana. Pedro?
Hello. Good evening, Council, Council. My name is Pedro Quintana. My partner and I recently moved to Half Moon Bay in the downtown district. Have you noticed why people complain on the Nextdoor app about the traffic issue? On the weekends, we feel trapped and we have to adjust on our daily errands. So we live on Kelly Avenue and I just wanted to ask the council if we can look into maybe holding a special session. I know that the summer months are winding down, so it's a great time for to get people involved, locals involved, and talk about this issue of resolving, because obviously we have cars just jam-packed for hours in our downtown streets. Also on the trash issue, I know that several cities around California have adopted downtown ambassadors programs. And it's pretty much a volunteer service where community members are out there picking up trash, also being engaged in public as well, but it's called Downtown Ambassadors. I know the city of Chico has done a program like that before. It has worked really well as well in regards to finding resources and also in regards to the trash issue as well. It sounds like we have a lot of passionate people here that love this city and I believe that we could hopefully solve some of these issues if we all come together. So thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Pedro. Welcome to Half Moon Bay. Thank you for the comments. You definitely got some passionate council members up here as well. So appreciate it.
Cheers.
Thanks, Pedro. I don't have any more hands raised at the moment, Mayor Eisen, if we'd like to move on from public forum. Actually, I did just get one.
Okay.
Kimberly Williams, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of San Mateo County Surf Rider Foundation. And I just wanted to say that I know the decision for Labor Day to open the beaches was a really tough one. I sat through the meeting. I watched you deliberate. I know it was a hard decision to make. And I frankly appreciated the challenge that you faced and I appreciated the decision that you made. San Mateo County Surf Rider, we're out there cleaning up the garbage just like everybody else. Several of us live here. We know what it's like. We also hate the traffic. We hate the bad behavior. But I think you were right in coming to the conclusion that we all are going to face that, whether you close the beaches or not. And I think opening the beaches was the right decision and I thank you for that because San Mateo Surf Rider Chapter supports beach access for everybody. And now at this time, when we're all faced with this strange circumstance, we need to be outdoors more than ever. And if we're going to face the bad behavior anyway, I think that's the way to do it. It's the best that you can do. And I would also like to say that at this time, National Surf Rider Foundation recently released a report and guidance to public officials on opening beaches. And I'd be happy to forward that to you. I'd encourage you to take a look at it. It might be helpful. And, you know, when you make some of these decisions and how you, I guess, keep the beaches open for everyone. And we just want to make sure that we encourage you to keep doing that because we think of all the things that we're all facing right now. That is one of the safest things that people can be doing to be outside. It's, it's good for our mental health and, and our physical health. We're all faced with this strange circumstance where we're worried about COVID-19. But, you know, as opposed to other issues, other places that we contracted, I think the beach is one of the safer venues. So I'd like to encourage you to, to stand by your decision on opening the beaches. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. And you'll, you'll hear a little bit more in our city manager updates, what happened with other beaches that were closed. We have some updates on that, just to give other perspective. It was a very tough decision and, you know, obviously even tonight, we heard, we're hearing both sides of it. So I just appreciate you bringing that up.
Our last speaker is Spacey Invader.
So what'd you guys do with the site of City Hall? There's a huge sign out there. So my two compatriots are busy getting ready for bed and they were excused, given their work earlier in public interest. But I didn't want to let the meeting go by without reaching out to thank Bob in particular and, and really express my gratitude to the council. I think that in a world where we're all or many of us are beginning to doubt our form of government, the cool thing about being in a small community with a truly representative government and a truly representative set of people to represent all of us is that you can do things that affect the community in a positive way. And you guys took a risk, which may still prove to have been not worth taking. But you took a stand and I can't be prouder to have worked with you and again with Bob to bring this to fruition. And I just wanted to say, our whole family wanted to say thank you very, very much on our behalf and on behalf of the community for taking this stand.
Excellent. Thank you, Spacey Invader. All right. Done with public comment here, I believe. Thank you so much for public for weighing in. We appreciate all your comments. We appreciate your feedback. Let's bring it into the council meeting, back to it. Are there any proclamations and presentations? I believe I have one that I'm supposed to be doing. Let me get back to that.
The first, Mayor Eisen, is the Midcoast Community Council update. And so I'll bring Claire over to provide that update and then we do a proclamation. Hey, Claire, go ahead.
Okay. We have a number of things actually, as I look at this, that we have been involved with in the last few weeks. First, the video bridge bypass. We, we and you have been meeting with Caltrans and DPW. And they will, they do get, they did get an encroachment permit from Caltrans. They will be putting in guardrails and crash cushions within the next three weeks. And so I think the bridge is going to be out for a long time. So this is desperately needed and that's a plus.
That's not just, that's fantastic news, Claire. And I appreciate your work on, on that one in particular. I've personally, as a biker in the community and having kids, this is a, this is a big issue. So having safety, you're talking about where the Miramar Bridge now is on Highway One, where the, where the detour is. Yeah, I'm very excited for the safety that's coming. So I appreciate your effort in helping spearhead this. Real quick, Bob, I appreciate your effort in spearheading this. I've been heavily involved in this as well. And I just, I just want to thank you all for helping to make this happen. I think it's something that absolutely needs to be done. And Claire, I agree, this is going to probably be a long time. So it's, thank you.
In addition to that, they, I believe they're going to be restriping the highway to give more shoulder room on the east side of the highway, which is where the guy was hit on the bicycle a couple of years ago. So they're going to try to make that a little safer on that side as well. We also had a meeting with Caltrans and other interested people about the crosswalk in Moss Beach. Once again, there's conflict between the county and Caltrans about the existence and safety of that. Caltrans is also proposing to put a crosswalk in, in Miramar across Highway One. And at this point, they have backed off on that, trying to find out what would actually be safe as terms of crossings for the highway. Fire has been a big issue. People are concerned with, obviously with fire risk and they're concerned with eucalyptus trees with, with Cory Park. They're concerned always about evacuation, which relates to what you were just talking about, about the traffic. Nicholas Calderon came and talked with us. He and Parks Department are in the process of finishing a vegetation study, which would delineate exactly what the risks are in county parks for fire and come up with a plan which would prioritize the use of funds and the immediacy of, of effective action. And that should be available in the next couple of weeks. As he said, they would like to approach fire reduction with data and science, which I was really glad to hear. Then the last thing is Caltrans has proposed Traffic Improvement Plan, which I think also includes Half Moon Bay, in which they are proposing large electronic signage and sensors in the roadway. We had asked when the tunnel was down, if you remember a year or two ago, that Caltrans have some way of knowing what's going on out here and that they have some way of communicating emergency information to motorists on the coast. If you look at their proposals as a response to that request, it's positive. If you look at it in terms of, this is just an extension of the signage and monitoring they have on freeways, it's not so positive. There was a, a public meeting on this last week. And I believe that Caltrans has agreed to come to the next MCC meeting to discuss this in detail. So that's what we've been up to. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
So much for presenting. Are there any other questions real quick? Okay, very good. Claire, it's a pleasure. Thank you so much. I appreciate the partnership that we've created between the two, the two different agencies. Thank you so much. Okay, the next, let me get back in here. Gosh. Different screens. All right, here we go. So is, is somebody teeing this one up, Jessica, or am I just going right into this?
You're going right into it. And we have Belinda from Alas who's here to accept it.
Okay, very good, very good. So we, this, this is Hispanic Heritage Month, Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. And Hispanic Heritage Month talking points. I'm going to talk to a few things that I've written down. Hispanic Heritage Month is the official celebration of individuals whose ancestry can be traced back to Mexico, Central and South America, the Caribbean and Spain. This observation started as Hispanic Heritage Week in 1968, but was expanded to Hispanic Heritage Month in 1988. As you can tell, this celebration doesn't start at the beginning of the month, but instead it starts on September 15th to mark the Independence Day of El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua and Costa Rica, closely followed by Mexico on the 16th, Chile on the 18th, and Belize on the 21st. This celebration serves to highlight the obstacles that Hispanics and Latinx individuals have overcome and the impact of the important contributions they make every day to our society and culture. Especially in California, where approximately 39.3% of the population is Latinx or Hispanic, the largest in the nation. And in Half Moon Bay, where approximately 31.5% of our population is Latinx Hispanic. In that spirit, I'd like to read the following proclamation.
Mayor Eisen, I don't think we have a proclamation to read. It was just that information.
Good. I was just going to say, okay, that's the last part of this. All right. As a show of our continued commitment to work with and for the Latinx Hispanic community, we'd like to present this proclamation to the Latino Advisory Council in the city of Half Moon Bay. And obviously it sounds like Belinda is here to accept on, on, on behalf of the community.
Thank you. Thank you so much, everyone, Mayor and council members. It's truly an honor to receive this on behalf of the community and on behalf of the Latino advisory. But I want to recognize that our Latino community here in Half Moon Bay are very special, are always committed to working hard, are always celebrating and highlighting what it means to be culturally responsive with family, with faith, with hard work ethics. And our children, you know, we see them thriving. We see our families on the front lines, especially during this time of COVID. And so it's been a hard time to not be able to celebrate together, not be able to do our, you know, celebrations that we usually do in the community. But having this moment today to say, que estamos aquí presente, that we're here present, que estamos aquí con nuestra ciudad, that we're here with our city, y que estamos aquí contigo, and that we're here together and we're here for them too. And we appreciate the work that the city council has done to raise the voices of the Latino community forward, to highlight Hispanic Heritage Month. And I hope that we can continue to really embrace the beautiful Latino community that lives in Half Moon Bay and that we can continue to march forward together as one community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Belinda. And you do such great work for the community. We're very appreciative to have you in Half Moon Bay.
And thanks to all of you for working collaboratively with the Latino advisory and with all of us. We appreciate you all. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move. Are there any other proclamations and presentations?
There are none.
Okay, very good. So I'm going to move on to mayor's announcements. So as mentioned earlier by some of the attendees, we have seen some, some increase in COVID cases on the coast. It is disproportionately hitting, you know, the communities, our Latinx community. I don't, it's not, I'm not saying it's due to Labor Day or anything like that. But what I do know from talking to my, my Latinx community is that the testing that we provide is during the day. And a lot of people don't seem to be able to make that testing time. And so I've talked with Bob and we are researching, I'm sorry, I've talked with our city manager, Mr. Nizbet. And we, we are exploring the option of trying to bring nighttime or hours beyond the regular workday schedule for testing to our community so more people can get tested. And then we've also talked about what we can do to make sure people understand what it is that you need to provide when you come to a testing center and what the cost is. And we want to make sure that everybody understands the different aspects involved. So people are not afraid to go get tested because testing will, will help us understand what we need to do to make sure we're reducing the amount of people that are exposed to COVID. So I just wanted to let that be known, that that is being researched. We're, we're studying it right now. And hopefully we'll come out with further information. I'm going to move on to report from, report out from recent closed session meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This council has not met in closed session recently.
Good. And then, so I'll move on to city manager updates to council.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public. And Matthew will be up in a minute and he will speak to the point you And, uh, Matthew will be up in a minute and he, um, ha, will speak to the point you just made. There's something new that he's been working on. We'll bring that up in a second. Um, but before I, uh, turn it over to Matthew, um, I just wanted to say this. Um, council member Ruddick, um, sends me links to articles, uh, from time to time. Uh, sometimes they're news articles, um, interesting things she finds in journals. Uh, she does an amazing job co- uh, combing, I don't know where she finds everything, uh, and sends on the interesting ones. Um, some of them I read very closely, uh, some of them I skim, I admit, and some of them I keep. So she sent me something, um, five and a half months ago, actually, and it was one of the ones I kept. Um, it was a, a, um, it was actually kind of an abstract from an abstract, if you can even imagine that. It was an article that summarized what's really a pretty complex and comprehensive, um, journal article, uh, that came out in two thousand seventeen. So obviously came out, uh, way before, uh, the pandemic we find ourselves in now. But she sent it to me on, on April first, uh, which, um, as everyone remembers, that was about two weeks uh, after we went into lockdown. So very interesting timing. Um, but I found myself coming back to it recently because with now, uh, five and a half months into the pandemic, uh, it's very, it was a fascinating article already, but it's more fascinating now that we're five and a half months into a pandemic and we're learning a lot and, um, we're discovering a lot about ourselves. So the article is called disasters and community resilience. And it was, um, published, like I said, two thousand seventeen by a Stanford professor, Hayagrieva-Roa. And I'm gonna give you the nutshell, I'm gonna give you the abstract of the abstract of the abstract. Uh, there's numerous hypotheses, uh, put forth in this article. And in fact, they have, um, two case studies that they look at, two disasters. Uh, and one is the nineteen seventeen pandemic, uh, and it's specifically how it affected Norway for some reason. But they also had another disaster they looked at in Norway around the same time. That was a natural disaster. Uh, they had a frost and that adversely affected their farming. And so it was, it's a very in deep, uh, deep analysis on this. And one of their hypotheses is that, uh, they really compared natural disasters as compared to, uh, what they said, uh, a disaster that is attributed to someone else, uh, which is how they described a pandemic. Because it's a virus, uh, that people give to other people, of course. And what they found was, and maybe this is not going to be surprising, uh, now, but again, they wrote this in two thousand seventeen, a pandemic is much more divisive to communities, uh, than natural disasters. Much more divisive, uh, because of that nature of how it is attributable, attributed to other people as opposed to chance, or it was a fire that we had no control over. And so I, I think that's a very interesting point they make. And again, as I read it five and a half months later, uh, I find it very interesting. They do have another hypothesis about what they think might be the key because they make the case that when it divides the community, uh, the community is not resilient and the recovery time is years. Uh, they, they mentioned over twenty years for Norway to really recover socially, uh, from the pandemic in nineteen seventeen. So the key is they believe the strength of the nonprofits in a community and creating an environment for the incubation of new, uh, cooperatives and organizations. And I'm just gonna quote from the article because I think it, I think it's really interesting. Disasters that are attributed to other community members weaken cooperation and reduce the formation of new cooperatives that, that serve the community unlike disasters attributed to chance or to nature, which strengthen cooperation and increase the creation of cooperatives. Epidemics of contagious diseases have long lasting effects on the organizational vitality of communities. This means that policy responses to epidemics should be broadened to include support for founding new organizations. The typical response to pandemics includes isolation and treatment, home quarantines, closures of schools, cancellation of large scale public meetings and other steps to reduce social density. While these immediate responses are entirely practical, policy planners should also consider how a pandemic impairs the social infrastructure of a community over the long term and undertake initiatives to foster building community organizations. So I think it's a fascinating article. I'll provide the link. And the third comment I want to make is, um, a reminder that the council did direct us, uh, to form a recovery task force. And it is something we're working on and I believe that this is critically important for the city to do our part in incubating those nonprofits, keeping our nonprofits alive, keeping our businesses alive with entrepreneurship and forming new associate ways for the community to network. New, new nonprofits that come out of this because again, this, this paper hypothesizes and proves that without that, there's an incredible breakdown from the divisiveness. And it's no secret that not only do we have the pandemic, but what the authors didn't know back in two thousand seventeen, there's a lot of other things going on in this nation that are dividing us. Uh, so we're gonna put a lot of energy into that recovery task force. Uh, I thank council member Ruddick for sending me the article. I will provide the link. It's, it's, it's fascinating. It is a deep read. It's pretty analytical. And just a final quote and I'll turn it over to Matthew. After all, if it is sociable communities that survive disasters by helping themselves, investment in enhancing the social infrastructure of communities merits ser- serious consideration. So with that, I'll turn it over to Matthew and he has an update on COVID and an update on Labor Day.
Thank you, Bob. And actually, before I share my updates, uh, we do have an update from Public Works. We have Jennifer Chong and Veronica Vosinak here, uh, to talk about some sustainability items. And then Colleen Latier, our, uh, communications program manager, will, uh, start the update on COVID. Jennifer.
Great. Thank you, Matthew. And, um, I promise to keep it short, but we do have a few exciting updates um, in the sustainability programs that we wanted to share with the community and the council. Perfect. And so I'm happy to be here. Um, good evening. My name is Jennifer Chong. I'm the Public Works Program Manager. Um, I'm pleased to be here this afternoon or this evening with Veronica Vosinak, our sustainability analyst. Um, I have one quick update on some exciting news and then I'll be turning it over to her when she has two quick updates before we turn it over back to Matthew and his crew. Uh, next slide, please. So I, I am extremely pleased to announce that the city of Half Moon Bay in partnership with the Office of Sustainability, the City of Daly City and J and D Recycling based out of Sa- San Mateo have been selected to receive a million dollar grant from, um, CalRecycle. So the, the purpose of this grant is to increase opportunities for beverage container redemption in underserved areas. Um, and many people on the call today might recall that the last redemption center closed in Half Moon Bay in two thousand sixteen. And so since then, um, our residents have had to take their bottles and their cans either to San Mateo or up the coast to Daly City in order to get that, um, deposit that you pay when you buy any type of bottle from any type of grocery. And so, um, we're really excited about this grant, um, and that it will provide us with the capacity and the funding to bring a center back locally to the city of Half Moon Bay. Especially given the trying times that we're in, we hope that this will be a positive, um, service. Uh, will be seen as a positive service enhancement to the community, um, as a way of getting a little bit more side cash. Um, and again, just getting your money back because you're the ones that are paying for it when you buy your bottles. Um, a couple of things to look forward to about this particular program. If we can move to the next slide, please. So, um, this, we are working through right now some, some licensing agreements with CalRecycle. But once we get the go ahead, we will plan to roll out the operation of the center as soon as possible. And the funding will be available to the pilot project, which again includes all four of those organizations I named through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two. So again, it is a pilot project intended to see if, um, this kind of structure will work and if we can roll it out in more areas, um, something more temporary. Uh, we are right now looking at having this recycling, uh, this redemption center placed at the parking lot off of Mill Street. And I want to just give a huge shout out to Kathy Oler, who owns that property, who we've been leasing from for her partnership and working with us to allow, um, the use of her property for this potential pilot project. Right now, the tentative operating hours will be for Sundays and Mondays from seven AM to four PM and Tuesdays from seven AM to twelve PM. And again, our hope is that this, um, you know, draws people, some of our locals to the downtown area to, you know, re- be able to redeem their bottles and cans and maybe encourage them to patron some of our downtown, um, downtown small businesses while they're in the area. And so with that, I'm happy to turn it over to Veronica for, um, our next two updates. Veronica?
Thanks, Jennifer. Um, good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thanks for the opportunity to give you this update today. Um, I'm here to, um, give another exciting announcement. Um, the city, um, received two Beacon Awards this year. So, um, for those who don't know, Beacon Program honors local governments for reduction in greenhouse gas emissions and also for adopting policies to promote sustainability. Uh, we received two awards. We received the Gold Level Spotlight Award. Uh, in order to qualify for this award, we needed to identify three different practices or policies, um, in ten different categories like energy efficiency, waste reduction or community design, um, and seven others. So, um, that's really exciting. And the second one that we received, uh, was a Platinum Level Spotlight Award. Um, Platinum Level is the highest, um, award that you can receive for these Beacon Awards. And we received that for, um, reducing our community greenhouse gas emissions by twenty percent between two thousand five and twenty seventeen. Um, so we're doing a really good job reducing our greenhouse gas emissions within the community. And we see the, the top award. So, um, we should be receiving our physical awards soon and there is a, uh, digital award ceremony on October eighth. So if you're interested, um, council on attending that, uh, you should receive a invite shortly. Um, next slide. And last, for the sustainability updates, I just wanted to make another quick announcement about California coastal cleanup. Um, for those who didn't see my presentation last city council meeting, uh, you can find more information, um, on the website on your screen. Uh, there are still two days to participate, this Saturday and next Saturday. Um, there's four teams within Half Moon Bay, a little bit of, uh, friendly competition between cities and the counties. So make sure that you, uh, sign up and make sure Half Moon Bay is represented. Uh, and if you check out our website, you can see, um, some different ways to participate and even some ways to, uh, win some prizes. So unless there's any questions or comments about the sustainability updates, I'll pass it off to Colleen.
Yeah, and just real quick, I mean, I'm sure the council feels this way, so I'll, I'll hopefully speak amongst the council, uh, for the council. But, uh, you know, this council is so focused on sustainability. Uh, it's, 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 it gives me pleasure to serve on a council that cares so much about sustainability and the environment. Uh, and so I just appreciate the work you two are doing to help bring that home for us. Uh, because, you know, the earth is where we live and, uh, we gotta take care of it. So appreciate the efforts. Thank you so much. Great awards.
Uh, good evening, honorable mayor and city council. Um, tonight I will be presenting our new sign designs for encouraging the public to wear face coverings. Um, as we're aware, the science continues to show that wearing masks reduces the spread of COVID nineteen significantly. And we wanted to create a face coverings campaign that was both localized, but also had a fun twist to it. Um, I've drafted four different designs that we will have displayed throughout the city, at our beaches, on the coastal trail and throughout town. Um, so here they are. So these are the four, um, signs that we will have displayed throughout. Um, and again, like I said, a local twist, you know, with both sea life and pumpkins. And additionally, um, we have purchased more I Heart Coastal Trail masks to hand out to our coastside community. Um, we'll be passing out a batch at the farmer's market over the next few Saturdays. Um, we did this last weekend, um, for the first Saturday and we had a great turnout and a great response. Um, I was told by the folks at the farmer's market that they actually handed out every single one. And thanks to our friends at the Coastside Farmer's Market for helping us with this. Um, you can see them wrapping the masks right here. Um, they shared this with us on social media, so we shared it on our page as well. And, um, if anyone listening in the community would like a mask, um, and if anyone wants to share this information, um, you can reach out to me, Colleen Latier. Um, you can send me an email and we can work together to, um, get you one. So if there's any questions, please let me know.
Another great program. I appreciate the way that you turned it into, I think we discussed this as a council, but you, you made it very Half Moon Bay friendly to come up with the signs. That was very creative, cute. And, uh, I think it's, it's, it's a good fit for our community to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Um, I will continue, uh, an update on, uh, COVID nineteen. Uh, and to Bob's point and the mayor's point, some of the efforts that we've been, uh, working on, on some pretty important issues here in Half Moon Bay. Uh, so the first is around testing and we know that the county has worked hard to provide, um, opportunities for testing here in Half Moon Bay, which is important. Uh, it can be difficult for folks to get over the hill, uh, into, uh, doctors' offices over the hill to receive tests. And so through Project Verily and a few other, um, opportunities, the county's brought testing to us. Uh, but we have heard that there's been difficulties accessing those tests. Uh, if you don't have good, uh, technology at home, access to good technology, uh, for individuals that are undocumented or, uh, otherwise concerned about sharing too much information with the government. There's just been some, some hurdles to overcome. And, uh, I've, I've just in the last couple of days been working with the county on a new project and, uh, it's something we'll put a full course, for, full court press on over the next couple of weeks to hopefully bring to fruition very quickly. Uh, but the county is working with a company called Curative, who offers, uh, self-administered testing kits. And, um, the city will have to be a partner in this and we'll happily do that. And the idea is to make available to anyone and everyone opportunities on a more consistent basis around more convenient hours. We're thinking a, a weekday evening, um, to come and get tested here in Half Moon Bay. Uh, these tests again are self-administered, so, um, it, it's, it's pretty non-invasive. It's, it's an easy test to take. And then, uh, those are shipped overnight to the, uh, to the company Curative and Curative guarantees results within forty-eight hours after receiving it. The county indicates that they're getting results, uh, usually within twenty-four hours. So we'll be working with the community on this with a lot of our partners. Uh, this will require volunteer support, so we're reaching out to our volunteer network. If anybody here is listening and watching tonight and wants to help get this rolled out to the community, please reach out to me. Uh, my contact information is on our website and, uh, we will definitely use any help we can get. There's, uh, some online training that people have to take, uh, just to make sure that they're safe in, in assisting with this. Um, and so the idea again is to, to host, uh, probably a weekly event in the evenings to allow people to come and get tested. And then we're also working with some of our partners to reach some of our harder reached communities, uh, and maybe go out into the community for our, our at-risk community members to also encourage testing. So more to come on this. Uh, this is all just developing very quickly, but it's, it's an exciting development and we're grateful to the county for making this opportunity available. Along with this, uh, we think, um, we've found that there's some communication challenges out there as well, uh, especially to our immigrant and Latino community. And so we've been working with the county, with some of our community partners and Mid Penn Housing, who operates Moon Ridge and Main Street Park, uh, those apartments. And there is gonna be significant outreach over the next couple of weeks to remind, um, our community members that, uh, of, of how to be safe during this time and how to keep your family safe and what kind of activities, um, increase the risk and how to mitigate some of those risks. So there'll be some, you know, boots on the ground, door to door canvassing, discussing, as well as some events coming up, literature that we think will help and we think combining this with a very, very low threshold for testing availability will really make a difference in getting more people tested in our community and getting those results back more quickly. Uh, additionally, we're working with a few of the council members who have some ideas about how we can better support some of our families that don't have maybe the traditional, um, living situations or, uh, working situations that make it living situations or working situations that make it easy to shelter in place or quarantine yourself if you do become infected. And so we're working on a couple of options to help remove some of those barriers as well. So this is kind of a holistic approach, we think, to helping especially some of the most vulnerable members of our community with getting tested, getting the right information, and getting the help they need to deal with COVID if, in fact, they find themselves infected. And so there'll be a lot more to come on this. And again, we're going to need the help of the community volunteers, so please reach out to me. And we'll be working with our different volunteer groups within the community and nonprofits on that. So more to come. Our next update is just a short debrief of the Labor Day weekend. We've already heard from the community and council members about this tonight. I'm joined by our police chief, Captain Saul Lopez. He'll be providing some details about the work the law enforcement did that weekend. I'll just be sharing some of the city's efforts. So as you know, the Tuesday before Labor Day weekend, the council had that very tough decision to make. And ultimately, we decided that the best way to mitigate the impacts of the crowds that were inevitably coming to the coast side was to keep the beaches and parking lots open that the city operates in order to disperse the crowds as much as possible. We then enlisted a good crew of staff who were incredibly grateful to for giving up a portion, if not all, of their Labor Day holiday weekend that they could have been spending with their family, relaxing, enjoying themselves, to be out there, involved with the community. And again, just really grateful to their work. We had staff out and about. They were visiting some of the, you know, major areas, the beaches, the trails, handing out those great masks that the I love the Coastal Trail masks as a way to encourage compliance as opposed to confront people. You come across a person without a mask, you can offer them a nice reusable mask that they'll be happy to wear. It really diffuses the situation and helps bring people into compliance. So many masks were handed out. We had extra crews from Public Works helping with garbage. We saw a ton of garbage come in and out that weekend. But by my observation, much of it made it to exactly where it was supposed to go in garbage bins, recycling bins. A shout out to Public Works. They made a lot of efforts right before that weekend to get Poplar Beach ready, get the trash disposal ready. And I think they did a great job. And our partner Republic Services, making sure that those bins were emptied so that we could continue to take that influx of garbage. And the Sheriff's Office, as Saul will share, out and about, working with the community. We know it was very busy. We know that there were some difficulties. We had to address some communication with state parks over traffic direction when it got really busy on Sunday. They are a great partner. They took our constructive criticism in stride and Monday made some changes. And I think it really made an impact to traffic in that area and in that community on Monday. We know it wasn't perfect. We know that there's always stuff we can learn from these weekends to help our community stay safe and healthy as we continually receive large crowds on especially warm weekends. And that's going to happen into the future due to our beaches and our community. I also want to shout out our community members who, many of whom put their money where their mouth was, went out every single day to help with the trash. When I came down to Poplar Beach very early on Monday morning, I came across many community members with bags full of garbage who had really worked hard to get the beach cleaned up and support our staff in their efforts. Very, very grateful to them. Sue Rannieri, who we heard from earlier, was one of those people grateful that she's, you know, she's going to let us know her concerns, but she's also going to get out there and work and help. And we're really grateful to people like that who sacrifice their time and energy to keep the coast healthy and safe. So I think it was just proof that when we all work together, we can't eliminate impacts, but we can help mitigate them. And all in all, I think the weekend went as good as it could have, given the amount of crowds we've gotten. Before I turn the time over to Saul, also share, we did reach out to many of the communities that closed their beaches over the weekend just to get a sense of what they experienced. And, you know, they confirmed that closing the beaches helped with some of the beach traffic. But it appears that every stretch of coast here in Northern California was inundated that weekend with people just trying to get away from triple-digit heat in the interior of the state and even other parts of, you know, the Bay Area and San Mateo County. And even even those cities that closed their beaches had thousands and thousands of people pouring in and and just trying to get to that cool coastal air. So again, very difficult decision for your council to make. And I think that we did what we could to mitigate those impacts to the community when we were faced with a difficult decision like that. So thank you very much. I'll turn the time over to Saul. And then afterwards, happy to take any questions on this or any of the COVID items.
Thank you, Matthew. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's an honor to be here again and with the community of Half Moon Bay. So in knowing the impacts of that weekend, as I had mentioned before, we were still in the midst of responding to the CZU fire that I was responsible for on the South Coast. And the majority, if not all, are staffing not assigned to Half Moon Bay, but from other bureaus and the Sheriff's Office were assigned for security details down in that area and mutual aid requests as well. But locally, I wanted to take a look at how what the call activity was going to be from Friday to Monday. And it looks like it was close to 200 calls for service, meaning either self-initiated by deputies or residents calling or dispatch for us to go service that call. And so that means 200 calls for four deputies. The same four deputies worked Friday through Monday, two on day shift and two at night. So you can just, you know, with that immense amount of calls, there's only so much time in the day that they can handle that. And that doesn't include multiple arrests that we had throughout the coast. Locally, in the city of Half Moon Bay, on Saturday night, we had two drunk in public arrests, one DUI, another DUI arrest on Sunday. And we had approximately about 30 or so Poplar Beach parking lot violations that were cited. I don't have the exact number of moving citations. I know that's always an interest to the community and the council. But I will say that we gave out hundreds of parking tickets all along the coast. And as I've mentioned before, whatever we do along the coast does impact Half Moon Bay directly. It's people shift around the coast depending on the traffic. And as Matthew said, there was some hiccups over the weekend, you know, with state parks. One of the lots, I believe it was either Saturday or Sunday, Matthew can correct me, but they shut their gates at Francis Beach at 9:00 AM. And that's when we got the huge influx of people going into that Allstate Lorraine and Poplar neighborhood and you know, the amount of calls that we were getting. And that that was fixed. But again, I reached out to some folks in Santa Cruz that I know, and they were inundated by thousands of people. Neighbors of mine went out to Santa Cruz County even after I told them that all the beaches were closed. They just didn't care. You know, so it was a more on the positive side. I know the council had that hard decision to make. And one of the factors was based on Highway One being closed down in Pescadero. Unbeknownst to me or to anybody, to Bob, the state made a decision to reopen Highway One from Santa Cruz up to our county Thursday afternoon, if I recall correctly. And that just kind of opened up traffic from, you know, from San Francisco all the way down to Monterey. So that was another factor that we have to deal with, including having that opening down for me, at least my responsibility of it still being part of or just adjacent to mandatory evacuation zones. So I just want to give a more of a global picture of the coast because all that traffic does come to Half Moon Bay or 92 as people start going home in the evenings. We we asked for extra personnel. There was really no availability Friday and Saturday. I believe we had a couple of extra deputies on Sunday, and then we had some extra CSOs, our community service officers throughout the weekend, helping out, not only in the city of Half Moon Bay, but also elsewhere. And I want to go back to that initial 200 calls for service. There is no way that four deputies could have handled all those calls. So that means a lot of the deputies that work in the unincorporated area or coming into the city, helping out, answer those calls, and then going back to their beats. So Labor Day is always a difficult weekend for us to handle, but the fires really impacted us in staffing. Most of the time, I would have people on the beach, on the coastal trail. But again, everybody was exhausted. I think we were on day 14 or 15. If I look at the calendar, the fire started August 17th, and I know I've worked about 17 days in a row because of that event. So I know a lot of my staff was, insurance office deputies were exhausted as well. So to say the least, we didn't, the one thing that I did want to mention is that we cited eight people for you know, maintaining a bonfire at Poplar Beach over the weekend, which is always good. I mean, that's kind of a rare thing that we get to do. And hopefully those citations will echo through social media platforms and tell people that we are citing for that type of activity. So that is the end of my report and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Matthew and Saul. I personally don't have any questions and I opened up to council real quick.
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you as well. Super, super work. Your work is always good.
Deborah, please turn on your volume.
Don't remember Penrose. I think you may have your hand over your microphone.
Can you hear me now?
That's better.
Oh, I did. I did. I forgot there was one there. I'm sorry. Sal, thank you. I just wanted to say that with all you've been going through with the fire, we really appreciate the service that you give our town.
Well, it's our pleasure. It really is. I mean, sometimes it's challenging, but I mean, we're up for it. But I appreciate the support.
Okay, excellent. Thank you all for the report outs. We appreciate it. And I think I'm I'm ready to move on. Just want to make sure that's okay with everybody.
I just want to say how how much our staff rocks. You know, I mean, everybody's doing wonderful, creative work. People are working long hours to do this, engaging with the community. We have a great staff. And I include Saul and his team in that as well. So just count me as grateful. I think you're doing a great job.
Excellent. Appreciate that. That's true. All right. With that, are there any other city manager updates?
That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Very good. And then I'm going to move into the consent calendar. And just just before we get into it, there are a few items that I would like to pull. But I just want to see, does other, do any other council members want to pull any items? Okay, I'll really quickly. So 1D is something I want to pull. And I believe the person for 1E wants to talk to that. Both of these things can just be talked to very quickly. We don't need staff reports, I believe, for either item. And with that, may we entertain a motion? Oh, wait a second. I'm looking at attendees. Are there any attendees that want to pull a item? Sorry.
Mayor Eisen, our protocol is to make comments on consent calendar items during the public comment portion of the agenda, but it's prerogative if you'd like.
No, 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 that's right. That's all good. That's all good. I just trying to make sure. I can't see if there's somebody's hands up or not. And I can't tell if it's an old hand up. But so let's continue with this. Can we can we have a motion, please? We entertain a motion. Well, I would like to entertain that we approve the consent calendar. Item 1A, wave reading of resolutions and ordinances. Item 1B, warrants for the month of August 2020. Item 1C, amendment to the side letter with Representative Management Team and International Union of Operating Engineers Stationary Local 39 AFL-CIO. Do we have, thank you. May we take a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Reddick.
You're muted, David.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhabak?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
You're muted.
Councilmember Penrose, you're muted now.
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Okay, yes, I'm so sorry. Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. And then so for item 1C, which is, or item 1D, I'm sorry, 1D, which is a resolution to increase workforce by adding position of maintenance worker. So I just want to be clear to the public, and I know council has already talked about this issue. But usually, this would be an item that would go on the on the resolutions and staff reports and would be an open item to for discussion. But because we are finding that we had extra funds, we did, we did the piece where we made sure that we saved funds and did what we needed to do. But now that we we found some extra funds, we thought this was the best position to then move forward with. This was unanimous by council. And so therefore, it is not on the, it is on the consent calendar. But I just want to make it clear because I've had, I've had heard people ask me this question. And so I just wanted to be very clear about it. That is why it is on the consent calendar. It is not on the general agenda. And that's why we're moving forward with it. And I guess I probably need to open that up to public comment before we move forward, or is that done?
Since we did pull this item, we should accept public comment on it.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if the two speakers wanted to speak on this item, but we can check. Brent Turner, did you want to speak on item 1D?
Yes, I was actually raising my hand to speak on the city managers' report and that whole section. Is that not subject to public comment?
It is not.
No.
I don't think so. Yeah.
I see. Okay, no, thank you then. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. No public comments, Mayor.
Excellent. And then is there anybody from council or can we entertain a motion on that one? Sure. I'll move it. Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Perfect. And then roll call, vote. Jessica, please.
Yes, Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhabak?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Excellent. And then item 1E, which is a resolution of the city council on the city of Half Moon Bay in support of using art as peace activism and approving the temporary placement of an art collage. I just wanted the lady who brought this forward to be able to speak to it. She brought it forward to me. Originally, I had our city manager research it with her, and here it is on our agenda. So would you, are you here?
I can introduce her. I can introduce her, Mr. Mayor. This is this is Bob. Yeah, you did exactly what you said. And over that time, I did work closely with Ms. Runa Ray. She's here. She wants to make a few comments. I found her delightful to work with. She had a creative idea. And so she, I said she could make a few comments and then you would take her item up.
Thank you so much. I would like to thank the City Council of Half Moon Bay, Honorable Mayor Adam Eisen, and Mr. Bob Nispert, the distinguished council members, general public, and the rest of the panel for giving me this opportunity to speak at the agenda. I'm Runa Ray and a fashion environmentalist, and I'm asking you for your support to conduct a peace activism project in the city of Half Moon Bay. The time that we live in is that of climate change, social injustice, and environmental racism. And it is up to step up and make a difference. The peace project proposed is aimed at getting the residents of Half Moon Bay to express their definition of peace through a word, sentence, or even a sketch. They will be cloth canvases distributed for individuals to expand, express themselves on what peace means to them. The canvases will then be collected and stitched together to be formed, to form a collage. This collage has the potential to grow every day as more This collage has the potential to grow every day as more individuals participate in this project of peace. The collage, when completed, will be displaced, sorry, will be displayed at a proposed location for public viewing and can continue to grow. On a later date, the collage will be removed to be displayed, uh, displayed in several locations such as the offices of the United Nations and the International Peace Bureau, which is a Nobel Peace, uh, laureate. Half Moon Bay will be the first city to carry out this peace project, which will be replicated world over. Thus, we can use art as activism to educate and advocate for policy change. I look forward to your participation and support for world peace. I will distribute these canvases to the residents of our community. And if there's any way that the city council can help me in furthering the canvas distribution, your support is always welcome. Thank you once again, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Excellent. Thank you for that great presentation, and thank you for ta, for taking this project on. I think it's, I think it's fantastic. Uh, and it's just been a pleasure to get to know you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Anybody else?
Mayor Eisen, we do have one public comment.
Okay.
Uh, Brent Turner, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mayor, Council. Uh, I don't know if our sheriff is still with us. Um, wa, wanted to, and staff, wanted to again, uh, speak up and appreciate this particular project and the symbolism involved. And naturally, it sounds like it, it would be a great thing for, for the city. Uh, I don't think it should be considered a substitute, though. Uh, when we talk about things like symbolic gestures or Hispanic Heritage Month or things like that, we have to reflect that our actions actually speak louder than the gestures. And if we are continuing to take the path of the Trump Kushner, uh, philosophy of herd immunity, which some have said may result in actual genocide as it adversely affects communities of color disproportionately. I think we should be very careful to make sure that when we do things like bring in the Surf Rider Foundation to talk about people getting fresh air and how we need to leave the beaches open in the middle of a pandemic, that we realize that we are causing unnecessary death in our community and that we're responsible for that death. So I want to be very clear on all this because there seems to be some sleight of hand, some disinformation, some game playing with bringing in speakers at opportune moments. We, we want to make sure that you understand the public is very clear on this. We're holding you responsible. You're failing to act for the best health and safety of the community. And, and we're upset about it, and there's no amount of glad handing or sidestepping that's going to cure this issue. It's not going away. Uh, I, I know nobody wants to hear it, and I've been painted as the bad guy. I was helpful to you on the Fourth of July, and I've always supported this council, but these actions have to stop. Thank you very much for your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you, Brett.
Oh. Let's see. A few more hands raised. Um, Emma, do you have a comment on item one E?
Uh, no, I had a comment on Sheriff Lopez's report.
Sorry, we, um, we don't have public comment on the city managers' updates. Those are reports out.
Okay.
Thanks. Pedro, do you have a comment on item one E?
Yeah.
Yes, back to art, please. Um, can we talk, uh, in regards to the canvases, can we share that information, uh, through Nextdoor? I know there's a, uh, Nextdoor, uh, canvas art page or group. Um, and I think it'd be really great to have local artists participate in this project. I think it's really great to showcase this art, uh, throughout our community. Thank you.
Good. Thanks, Pedro.
And.
Done.
I conclude this public comment.
Good. All right. Uh, anything else from council? Are we ready to entertain a motion on this one? I need a little assistance here. Yeah.
Yeah. I move that we adopt a resolution. Um, in support of using art as peace activism and approving the temporary placement of an art coll, of an art collage.
Perfect. And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, and may we do the roll call?
Councilmember Rhabak?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, and now we are moving into, uh, ordinances and public hearings. Um, I, I need to take a quick break possibly. Is, is that fine? Can we do a five minute break, or should we just try to continue and I can quickly, yeah, go ahead, Debbie.
You're muted, Debbie. Five minutes.
Debbie's asking for a five minute break.
Good, good. I, I need it as well. Um, and, uh, and when we return, we'll start with item two A. Uh, and, and I think for me, I can be back at nine thirty. So maybe let's see if we can get four minutes. Here we go. Item two A, which is the second reading of an ordinance amending chapter eight point zero four animal control, chapter nine point one two, public nuisances affecting public peace and safety, and chapter nine point one three park regulations or reintroduce with amendments.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll take this one. Uh, it's a bit of a mouthful. Um, so this is, uh, this is the, the third time you've considered this ordinance, uh, just sort of as a refresher of where we are. On July twenty-first, um, the city council considered this comprehensive park and beach ordinance, which does a number of things, um, including prohibiting, um, uh, single-use plastics, um, on parks and beaches. It does some cleanup to, um, clean up our municipal code with respect to rules in parks and in beaches. Um, uh, clarifies rules regarding, um, off-leash dogs, uh, as well as, um, rules regarding, uh, fire pits and alcohol on the beach. And as you recall, on July twenty-first, the council, um, uh, introduced the ordinance. Um, ordinance is required two readings, uh, introduction and then a second reading. Um, so after the introduction of the ordinance, um, uh, staff and, and council members received, um, some input from the, from the public regarding the component of the ordinance that deals with alcohol on beaches. Um, as you recall, previously, um, to, um, some, uh, uh, an amendment that was done a couple of years ago, uh, Half Moon Bay beaches, um, were, alcohol was allowed on the beaches. Um, after this amendment, um, regarding parks and, and beaches, uh, a couple of years ago, um, the municipal code was amended, um, to prohibit alcohol in the beaches, although, uh, that action was not necessarily, um, uh, intentional. It was sort of a cleanup, um, action which had that, um, um, unintentional consequence. Uh, so where we stand now is, um, the introductory, the orders was introduced on July twenty-first, uh, would allow alcohol on beaches. Um, at your last meeting, at the second reading, um, the council received some input, but felt like they hadn't really received sufficient input on this question of whether to allow or prohibit alcohol on the beach. Um, so over the past few weeks, um, I understand some input has been received, um, by council members, um, as well as director of the city clerk, um, and, you know, you are now in a position, uh, to, uh, you know, make that decision about whether to allow alcohol on the beaches, um, or prohibit it. I will say to sort of as a, um, a procedural matter, if the council were to decide that, um, to stick with what was introduced on July twenty-first and allow alcohol on the beach, um, this would be effectively the second reading, so we would be done. Um, if however, the council, uh, decides to prohibit alcohol on the beach, um, then that, then that would be basically, um, option number two in the staff recommendation, the staff report. And so that would be the introduction, and then we come back for a second reading of that ordinance to complete the second step.
Understood, understood.
Great.
Great, and a very, very well explained, very well explained. It's, it's in the staff report too, so shouldn't be any questions on that. Um, all right. Uh, I am going to ask if council members have any clarifying questions before opening it up for public input. Okay, good. Thank you. I appreciate the head shaking. That gives me some feedback. All right. Based on that, I'm going to open it up for public feedback. Uh, are there anybody, any members of the public that wish to talk to this topic?
I do have a few. Here we go. Okay. Kim, go ahead.
Yes, um, I, I believe if we, um, maintain no alcohol, it aligns with the state beaches. Is that correct? Do the state beaches allow alcohol? No, they don't. So, uh, my feeling is that if we align, that just keeps us kind of aligned with the state, so there's no issues there. And I also, um, believe if the city beach is alcohol-free, it may help reduce the amount of trash that is left behind. I regularly remove from the beach champagne bottles, beer bottles, hard liquor bottles, wine bottles, all whole or broken beer cans, hard seltzer cans, beer bottle caps, champagne corks, wine corks. For the, these two reasons, I think, um, maintaining no alcohol on the beach is a good idea. It's consistent with the state beach as well as protection of our environment and our beaches because that trash ends up in our ocean. Thanks.
Thank you, Kim.
Uh, next we have Pedro Cantona.
Hi, yes. Thank you, council. You know, my only, my only concern for this is regards to regulation, regards to how if we do, uh, switch gears and go to banning alcohol on the beaches, how will this be regulated? Obviously, we've heard from the report from the, uh, from the Chicago Police about that there's only two deputies between the city, the city of Half Moon Bay. So how will you really regulate this new, if we do ban alcohol, who's going to go out there and regulate this and enforce this law? Um, I'm all for the environment. I'm all for cleaning our beaches, but my only concern is regulation. If we have a law on the books, how are we going to enforce it? Um, and that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pedro.
And next we have. Emma, Emma, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what Pedro said. My concern is enforcement. We do have limited, um, resources as we heard from Sheriff Lopez. And I'm worried that if we aren't consistently enforcing something like this, then the instances that are enforced are where people are reported by other beachgoers, and often that provides an avenue for racial profiling. Um, so I think there could be unintended consequences of this that, um, inadvertently target, um, minority groups.
Thanks, Emma. That concludes public comment, Mayor.
All right, I'm going to conclude the public comment. And, uh, let's bring it back to council to discuss. I mean, I, real quick, do we still have Saul on the line?
No, I don't know if he is, Mr. Mayor, but I can speak to that, and I think, uh, the captain has spoken to it before.
Right.
Um, they would do it to the best of their ability, but it would not be a high priority.
Yeah, yeah. Very, in, in terms of enforcement, just, uh,
Correct.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, I think that's well understood on council at this point, uh, as well. So, uh, council, any, any questions? Any particular back and forth on this topic?
Did city staff receive any communications one way or the other? And have individual council members received any feedback? I've received none, so.
On, on this topic?
Yeah.
I know, I know Bob, you and I have received, Robert, you and I have received some.
Yeah, and I think there are all, most of the letters were added to the attachments here. Um, and I don't know, I think there are around eight or nine letters and, um, out of those, I believe it was around eight out of the nine preferred not to allow alcohol. And one person was in favor of it.
Yeah. So ba, based on that, I mean, do we have a motion, or do we need to discuss further? I'm ready to move on this.
Sure.
I just want to say that, um, I am for, uh, banning alcohol on the beaches. And I think one of the most reasoned arguments that I've heard, um, have to do with consistency on the coast. If we allow alcohol on poplar and surfers beach and they don't allow it on the state beaches, what are we then doing? Um, it, it, it makes no sense. People don't distinguish one beach from the other.
No, I agree.
Poplar all the way up Kelly.
Agreed. My, my big fear, of course, and it was brought up by other, by other people, uh, as they were doing the public comment. I'm not sure if they were doing it from this perspective. They were, they were talking more from a profiling perspective. My fear always, when we put laws on the books with, with not necessarily knowing that we're not going to be focusing per se on enforcement, is more the amount of public input of people taking pictures of people drinking alcohol on the beaches and sending them to council constantly. This person's got a beer on the beach. This person's got this. This person's got that. But ultimately speaking, I'm in favor. I agree. We'll just have to deal with that when they come, um, and so is life. It makes sense to have consistency.
Okay, so I would like to move that we reintroduce with amendments an ordinance amending chapter eight dot zero four animal control, chapter nine dot twelve, public nuisances affecting public peace and safety, and chapter nine dot one three park regulations of the Half Moon Bay Municipal Code to add and clarify rules and regulations, including the walking of dogs, on-leash, off-leash activities, smoking in parks and beaches, alcohol consumption in parks and beaches, and the prohibition of single-use plastic bottles in city-owned parks and beaches.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Cool, cool. And may we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Penrose?
Yeah, and just for the record, that's, that's number two on the list, just, just so everybody's aligned, but yeah.
Yeah, and so the revised ordinance will come on the consent calendar at the October sixth meeting for second reading and adoption.
Perfect. Clarification for the public, the, the amendment would be the one banning alcohol on the city beach.
Correct.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhabak?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes, and I really want to thank staff for this one. We, I feel like this one took a lot of fine tuning and doing, so I just want to appreciate you. I think we came to a great final conclusion with this, and thanks for sticking with us through this process.
And I also want to say that I'm really thrilled about the single-use plastic ban. That's something we've been asking for, for a long time, and, and staff has done good work on that, so thank you.
I agree. Very, very well done. Uh, so next, we are moving on, uh, moving on to item two B, the disposable foodware ordinance.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, let me just share my screen. Okay. So, good evening again, Mayor, City Council. Uh, thanks for the opportunity to talk today. Uh, I'm Veronica Bostonak, your sustainability analyst, and I'm here today, um, to introduce the disposable foodware ordinance. So as a little bit of a background, uh, council identified sustainability as a council priority both last fiscal year and this fiscal year. Uh, staff had created a sustainability implementation plan last year, and you'll hear, um, an update on that item later tonight. Um, but one of the key policy actions from last fiscal year was to draft a disposable foodware ordinance. Uh, I had conducted a study session with you all way back in February. And, um, due to COVID and wanting to be respectful of the changes all the food service businesses were going through and needing to shift our outreach strategy a little bit, um, we conducted our outreach for this ordinance between June and August of this year. Uh, you can see on the left all of the methods that we use to outreach to both the community and the business members. Uh, most notably, we sent out physical mailers to the ninety-three food service businesses within the city. Uh, we coordinated with the, uh, Chamber of Commerce and the Downtown Business Association to make sure the information went out on their listservs. And staff conducted a informational session, uh, in July, uh, via Zoom for both community members and, uh, businesses that were, uh, that were impacted. That informational session was recorded and we have it. It's still, uh, up on the website, but we wanted to put it up there for people who couldn't attend the live session so they could get the same information. Um, overall, the vast majority of the feedback that we received, about eighty-five percent of it, was supportive. Overall, the vast majority of the feedback that we received, about 85% of it, was supportive. We had both community members applauding the city council for going in this direction. And I also had a lot of businesses that were sharing with me the ways that they have moved in this direction as well. The remaining 17% was more neutral statements and questions, mostly revolved around two subjects. One, asking if for public services had the infrastructure available to process this change of materials. I'm happy to report that they do. They're ready for this change. And we also have some items in our franchise agreement that solidify that a little bit. And the other question that I received was a little bit more specific to the businesses, asking if they, if there were particular items that even existed, and also asking for support for businesses that might need assistance finding items. So luckily, in working with the county on this ordinance, we have access to their consultants that they're currently in negotiation with. Once that consultant is on board, we will be able to provide technical assistance to those businesses that need assistance switching to disposables or to reusables when, once they're on board. So, good news for that. Otherwise, I didn't receive really any outright negative comments. It was either positive comments or neutral, specific nitty-gritty questions. So for the benefit of the council and the community, since it's been a while since I did the study session, I wanted to go over what this ordinance does. So there are three objectives. We're looking to eliminate foodware that is not reusable or compostable, to improve the health and safety of the Happy Moon Bay community members, and to reduce the unnecessary distribution of disposable foodware items and accessories. So the specific businesses that will need to comply with this ordinance are food facilities that serve prepared food intended to be consumed by the public. So that would be restaurants, cafes, farmers markets, caterers. One easy way for businesses to determine whether or not they need to comply if they need a environmental health permit to operate. If they need an environmental health permit from the county, they'll need to comply with this ordinance. What items are we talking about with this ordinance? So we're talking about foodwares and accessories. So we're talking about clamshells, plates, bowls, cups, shrods, anything that you would need to distribute or consume prepared food. There are two types of items that are targeted with this ordinance. We have polystyrene or styrofoam and plastic. Happy Moon Bay does currently have a styrofoam ban, but this ordinance would repeal and replace that ban. So that is why it's included here. And when I talk about plastic, I'm talking about both the more traditional petroleum-based plastics, but also compostable plastics. So those compostable plastics cause mainly two issues. One, they cause confusion and contamination between different waste streams. And the second, they they break down similarly to regular plastics. So if they're not in an industrial composting facility, they break down into microplastics, which is not good for our, our streets and our, our beaches and our waterways. So of course, we would like businesses, if possible, move to reusables. But if for some reason they do need to keep disposables, there are some acceptable disposable items. These items must be fiber-based and compostable. Some of the bigger items, like plates and clamshells, must also be BPI certified. The Biodegradable Products Institute certifies items to make sure that they are able to break down in industrial composting facilities, and also making sure that they're free of polyfluorinated substances. Some of these substances can be linked to various health issues. So it's important that, especially with these bigger items. Chemicals are not present. And then anything else, any of the accessories, they must be fiber-based compostable to reduce any confusion and to make sure that those items are more likely to break down. There are a couple of changes from the county ordinance. We received some really great feedback from the council during the study session, so I wanted to highlight these changes here. So we have further reduced the accessory distribution method. The original model ordinance from the county allowed foodware accessories to be distributed by customer request, upon acceptance of a request from the business, and also through self-service kiosks. So we removed those other two, and the only way that businesses can distribute these accessories is by the request of the customer. So the reason for this is to make sure that these businesses are not giving out these items unless they, the customer actually wants and needs them. The other item that we added was we added some language to encourage reusables, especially, we anticipate that most of the time this will happen with dine-in customers. There are some pilot programs out right now for reusables for takeout. So if businesses are interested in learning more about some of those and getting some technical assistance, they can reach out to me and I'm happy to connect them with some of these resources. There are some items that are not included that are worth noting in this ordinance. Prepackaged foods, so food that is made on a different site and brought somewhere else to be sold. Prepackaged food is exempt from the ordinance. Aluminum, aluminum is still fairly recyclable. And there are also some exemptions for medical accommodations and when there's no feasible alternative. I'm not going to go into detail about these, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer. So the biggest piece that we're looking for guidance from the council on today is the timeline. So we received feedback from the council that you all would like this ordinance to go into effect as soon as feasibly possible. So I went back and forth with the county on this a little bit, because they're considering delaying their enforcement date a little bit. The earliest date that is feasible for them to do the education and subsequent enforcement would be July 9th of 2021. So it's a little shorter than the original 365 days, but not quite as long as where the county is looking to go. So it's worth noting, the counties, so that includes the unincorporated areas and the other three jurisdictions are looking at delaying the enforcement date to November of 2021. So we have it written in the ordinance today for the earliest feasible date, which is July 9th. But there may be some value in lining up with the, with the unincorporated areas of the coast side.
And can, real quick, can you just talk to that value? Because I think that's super important that we actually line up, unfortunately, even though I want this done ASAP. But like, can you talk to the value? So we, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I will go twofold. I think part of the reason that staff was thinking about going for the earlier date is we know a lot of the businesses are going through their foodware much faster than they were before. So it may make a lot of sense to go for the July 9th date. Some reasons for lining up with the, with the unincorporated areas. So that would include El Granada, Pescadero, a lot of the areas that are very close. The coast side as a whole is fairly cohesive. So it would make more, it would reduce confusion for a lot of businesses and the patrons to know that everything's going into place at once. There was also another one.
Let me, let me jump in, Mr. Mayor, if I can. You know, I, we, what we've heard from the council is be a leader and, and, and be bold. And so this was the way to be as bold and be as much of a leader as we can and could be. And that's why our recommendation would be to start this July 9th. The big question we had all along was when, when can we expect support from the county and their consultant team? What they've told us is around July 9th. In that point, they will provide that support to us. So, you know, our perspective was, let's be a leader. Let's, let's, let's get out in front of this and kind of move from this. I think one of the concerns that would be a legitimate one is if we were under the same company who was doing the garbage pickup and everything. But given that recology is to the northern part of the county, which is really in the area, which is really where most of the jurisdictional kind of issues come in those, those, those different businesses, is really different with us with Republic. So that would be a concern I think we would have. Now certainly, there's some confusion among, you know, ultimately out there today, tomorrow, and in July and in November as to where you put these items and which bend do you put them in? And that's going to be an education process. So that's where we landed, and that's where our recommendation landed. But, you know, there is nothing, you know, there is nothing inherently wrong with, with, with aligning with the county and with some of the other jurisdictions in the county. But, but that's why we landed where we did.
Good, no, good answers. Thank you.
Great. So then I just have our last slide. I have our recommendation. It's a lot of words, so I'm not going to read it all. But the first one is to conduct the public hearing and introduce the disposable foodware ordinance. And then the second is to authorize the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding between the city and the county. So that second piece would allow the county to enforce on our behalf. So I'm looking forward to hearing any questions or comments. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you. Do we have any clarifying questions from council before I open the public hearing?
Yes, there was, there was, can you go to that last slide, please?
This one?
I don't see it.
Is that the slide you're asking for, Deborah, or the recommendation?
No, the one right before that.
Okay.
What is purchasing records?
Sure. So that, basically, the food service businesses need to keep records of the foodware that they're purchasing 30 days after the ordinance is adopted. So they really, the reason for waiting is for them to move through their stock, not for them to stock up on plastics. So these purchasing records, they keep on hand for any auditing that may be necessary.
So just for the record, we could audit them at any time to see what they are now purchasing moving forward once the ordinance goes into effect?
Mayor, if I could, and to, to, to the question, I think we found why this is important when we had the request from the tobacco sales. And there was a question about, well, when did you purchase these, these products? And there was this whole issue. And I think the county sort of, sort of has learned from this and, and, and put this into, into play in the ordinance. And given that experience with the flavored tobacco issue and, and all the things going on, we think it makes sense. But that's, I think that's where this sort of came from, is that idea of, of you need to keep your, your records so we can see and make sure that, that, you know, you didn't just go and, and stock your entire back, you know, stock area with, with plastics. That's why it's there.
No, it's a good question. Great question. Good clarifying question there. Anything else? All right, so I'm going to open the public hearing on Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, it's not a clarifying question. So if you're going to do public hearing, I'll wait.
Okay, yeah, and then we can open it back up. We'll, we'll be able to go back in. So I'm going to open up the public hearing for item 2B, disposable foodware ordinance. And do we have any public speakers?
We have one.
Okay.
Kimberly Williams, go ahead.
Hi, this is Kimberly Williams, and I represent Surf Rider Foundation on this topic and, and personally. And I would like to say that San Mateo County Surf Rider contributed along with many others to help develop the disposable foodware service ordinance to the unincorporated areas of San Mateo County last year. And I personally volunteered my personal time to go around and survey restaurants in the county and found mostly exactly what Veronica found, that, that almost all of them were supportive. And if they weren't currently doing these things, they really wanted to be able to do them. And we offered to help them. The county now has a program in place where they are offering some of that help and clean water action also, I believe, was offering grants for that purpose. So Surf Rider fully supports this ordinance, and we encourage you to adopt it and, and put it in place as soon as possible. We were a little disappointed about the county delays for the other ordinances, but we understand why they occurred. But we hope that you'll be a leader in this regard and, and we'll be helping any way that we can. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Great, great contributions. Any other public comments? I can't see them on my screen, so.
No, I don't believe we have anymore.
All right, cool. I am going to shut the public hearing. And then Debbie, Deborah, if you don't mind, I'll go right back to you with, with Councilwoman Penrose with, so you can open up the questioning.
Okay, I don't really have questions. Thank you for a very well-done report, Veronica. I appreciate it. This has been a long time coming, and I'm, initially, I have to say, I was, I was disappointed at the dates. It's one more year, especially during a year when we are producing an excessive amount of carryout, non-reusable, plastic and styrofoam containers, even though they're not allowed. We see them all the time. But I do understand the, the bit about allowing businesses to stock correctly so that they have not, they have a date in mind when they know they have to switch over. So they're not going to be losing money on unused banned products. So I get that. However, the statement that Jennifer or Veronica made about our council wanting to take a leadership role and have our town be a model town on, upon which other towns can base their actions and pass their ordinances. That, that's something I'd like to maintain. So I, if we can't do it earlier than July the 19th, that's the latest I want to do it.
Yeah, July 9th, but absolutely agreed. Yeah. Very good. Any, any other council, should we go around the room? Let's go Councilwoman Ruddick.
I'm totally supportive, and I'm thrilled we've reached this point. It seems like a long time ago when we were dealing with the issue, you know. But times passed. Staff's done a great job. We're ready to roll. So, ready to roll like next year, which is fine. We're in a good place, I think.
Council, Councilmember Rarback?
Well, I agree completely with Debbie. It's, it's, it's time, as we say.
Excellent. And Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yeah, long overdue. Thanks for the staff work, and I'm glad we're here.
Yeah, good. And then just, just for myself, couldn't be more excited about this. You know, I am, I'm with Deborah on this one, Penrose. It, I, it's, it is a shame that we didn't have this for this absolute time period of COVID here, where it seems like the, we've seen garbage is overflowing with, with this more and more as, as people take out food and visit our restaurants. So I don't think we will have any trouble going through the excess inventory. And I think it should be an easy transition. You know, we did have a little bit of problems with tobacco and some of that tradition, a transition. This should be a much easier one. We're giving them, we're giving a lot of time to be prepared. And the inventory should be easy to go through between now and then, easy to make the change. So I'm excited for it. I think it's a great step forward for a town. And again, this is a council that continues to put sustainability at one of the highest levels of what we're focusing on. We need to be a leader on it. I agree. The, the July 9th, I would like to do it regardless of kind of what the county's doing at that point. I still think we need to make a stand and be, be the leaders on this one. So that's, that's my perspective. And with that, can we entertain a motion?
Well, actually, could I, I'd like to make one more.
Please, please.
So, you know, is, is part of this leadership role, are there communications able to prepare for our local businesses that sort of, of a marketing nature, you know, sort of putting the spotlight on our businesses for doing sustainable activities? You know, partnering with them to help market them, to market what we're doing?
Yes, definitely. Yes, definitely. So that's part of what, um, the county is providing. The county's consultant is providing some marketing. Um, and I participated in some of the process with that. And I think that they, they're really looking to highlight and, and showcase the businesses, the early adopters and the ones that, um, do so after July ninth. Um, so that's a big part of why the county wanted to delay until July ninth was to make sure that they're able to create those materials and do the education needed to make sure the businesses are set up for success.
Yeah. Uh, and this is good because I think, I think where you're going with that, uh, Councilwoman Ruddock, which I agree with. I, I, I believe that sustainability is part of the Half Moon Bay brand, if you want to call it that. And when you think about what we want to espouse as a city in terms of why people would come here and all the different pieces, one, one of the key elements has got to be the sustainability piece and, and us being the leaders in that marketplace. So fantastic. Uh, can we entertain a motion?
Yeah, I move that we introduce an ordinance repealing section seven point three zero of the Half Moon Bay Municipal Code entitled polystyrene-based disposable food service ware prohibited and adopt a new chapter seven point three oh entitled disposable foodware. And that we authorize the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding between the city of Half Moon Bay, the county of San Mateo for disposable foodware ordinance, education and enforcement activities.
Ready second? Beautiful. And Jessica, will you kindly do the honors?
Sorry, who seconded?
I did.
I think it's part of, yeah.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruddock?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes, and thank you for making it happen. Yeah, very good. Give a hand to that one. Thank you, Veronica. Great job.
Thanks.
All right, we, we're still here. So let's move on to resolutions and staff reports. Uh, we're going to start, we'll start with item three A, the execution of easements for trail access, maintenance and agricultural access on the Johnston House property. We can make this one pretty quick. This is good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I will try to make it quick. I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, but we will put up a map if, um, uh, Ms. Blair will indulge me on that. It's a, the map we're going to show is attachment two. It's in your packet. Uh, there are a lot of attachments in your packet. I'll go through them quickly. Uh, the, uh, the recommendation is to authorize the city manager to execute five easements and one license related to trail access, maintenance and agricultural access, existing water lines and future park planning at the Johnston House property. Uh, this item was before your council almost exactly a year ago. Um, attachment one to the staff report is a letter agreement, a letter of intent that the council authorized execution of between the city, Mid Peninsula Open Space and, uh, Mid Penn and Peninsula Open Space Trust or POST. Uh, that set the roadmap, uh, I would say for the actions that are now before you today. Um, so quickly going through all the easements, the most critical one is the easement that we are receiving uh, adjacent to Higgins Road. Uh, this one is shown in, uh, I'm sorry, what color is this one shown in? This is the orange segment on the map. It doesn't look orange to me, uh, but it's a thirty-foot wide easement so that we can, um, uh, construct a trail segment between Highway one and the Johnston House Park property. This is part of the bike and pet master plan, something we like to do, and it keeps pedestrians, uh, off the road. This does get a lot of traffic, dog walkers, et cetera. So this would be offered to us. And in exchange, uh, that's attachment three, uh, the main focus of what is being offered to, to POST primarily, but it also benefits Mid Penn is the access easement. And those are the segments that are shown in red and yellow. And those allow, uh, Mid Penn to access their future property, which is to the right of this map, called the uplands portion. And it also allows the farmer, GST Farms, to access their parcel, which is the part, uh, down in the flats that is retained by POST so that they can, uh, go back there and, and do their farming work. Uh, and this is historically an access that they have used. The, the pipeline, the water line easements are all contained along Higgins Road. And they're essentially within or adjacent to the trail easement we're getting. These are existing water lines. Uh, we have a water line for water service at the Johnston House. GST Farms has wa, a water line for service that they use. And then there's a third one. And so this is a cleanup, um, that actually, uh, associates easements with these existing pipelines, uh, that were never there in the first place. That's attachment five, six and seven. And then finally, the last, um, attachment is a license. The reason it's a license instead of an easement is that it's not permanent. The purple line is an existing road and that's what GST has been using. So it's been there historically. They use it and we want to allow them to continue using it. But the idea was that it's not permanent because eventually as the city plans this parcel, that purple line might kind, might be in the way. And it's better to have them use the yellow line in the future. And they, part of this agreement has them rocking and improving that, that access to make it more of a permanent access. So once they start permanently using the yellow line or, and/or the red line, uh, the purple one would go away and we wouldn't need a license anymore. Um, so those are all what's before you today. I do want to announce, um, that both, uh, there's someone, there's people here from both Mid Penn and POST. We've put a lot of work into this. We do think it's exciting. As I mentioned in the staff report, it's just a great, uh, triple win, quadruple win, really. I had the opportunity to meet John GST, a great guy. Um, it's just a great relationship, uh, that GSTs have with POST to farm that land. And it's just, like I said, a really good example, uh, of a public-private partnership here. Uh, everything's working, uh, for the future of this property to work collaboratively and, uh, together. So Mike Williams is here from Mid Penn. It's great working with him. Dan Olsteen is here from POST. And then I understand that one of the Mid Penn board members that represents our area is also here, Larry Hassett. Um, and so I do believe, um, Mike Williams and Dan Olsteen want to make some quick comments, but I'll take any questions now and then you can turn it over to them.
Does council have any questions? Okay. Uh, very good. And, and just real quick. So I, I understand this is going to be, uh, it, it's going to be an area that's going to become more usable for recreation, more or less.
Uh, yes, I would say so. In our, in our, um, park master plan, it is, this property is envisioned, um, for, for changes over time. Um, there is a, uh, some, some policies in there that kind of envision the future of it, uh, for ourselves. But on top of that, I didn't mention, um, but I think it is in the staff report, um, the uplands portion that Mid Penn will retain, that is their business. They manage, uh, many regional parks and open spaces with, uh, trails. And they do intend to put a nature trail, a little loop, I think a mile and a half loop on the upland parcel. And we would, that would be a partnership then because the access to that trail would be through the city's Johnston House property. So again, these easements set it up so that we can work collaboratively as we develop our property and they develop their property. So it does become, have some features for, for, for the public to use, uh, in addition to what it has now.
Absolutely. Perfect. Perfect. All right. Uh, let's, uh, o, open it up to the public. Uh, anything else from council real quick before I open it to the public? Perfect. Let's open it to the public, please, and thank you all for making this happen. Uh, I think Mike Williams is first speaker.
Yeah, Mike Williams, go ahead. Thanks.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, my name is Mike Williams. I'm the real property manager with Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District. First, I want to acknowledge and thank your city manager Bob and his staff who have been very collaborative and supportive in this partnership project. And Mid Penn looks forward to collaborating with the city in the future on trail planning, implementation to provide public access to open space lands protected by POST and Mid Penn. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, did anybody else that worked on this project want to make any comments? Um, okay.
Dan Olsteen raised this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. See it.
Thanks, Dan. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. Thank, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Uh, I want to echo Mike's, um, compliments to city staff uh, as well as, uh, the city's council who worked, uh, on, uh, making sure that we had all of these, uh, interweaving and overlapping easements straight. And, um, uh, it was, it was a good team effort over the last year in doing that. Um, and I want to also echo the point that Bob highlighted in his report. This is a real, uh, win for everybody involved, all three of our organizations, as well as, uh, as, as, as the farmer. Um, and, um, I'm very appreciative of the council's continuing and staff's continued support for agriculture and recreation in the area. Um, this continues, you know, the, the great long history of agriculture on this property and in, in, in your community, uh, as well as the opportunity to, as, uh, both Bob and Mike described, um, expand opportunities for recreation in this area. So very excited to be a part of this project and continue to work with city staff to move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Yeah, it's rare to have a, a win-win-win, uh, proposition. This seems to be right there in it. So it's, so it's an, it's an honor to be part of this, really. Uh, anyone else? All right, I'm going to bring it back to council. Uh, any comments?
I just want to say how exciting it all is.
It is.
You know, it is a win-win-win. And it, uh, it'll be great for the future in terms of, I think, recreation and creating linkages between our community and the, um, the open space assets of both of those, um, organizations. Um, great work, everybody. And thank you.
Excellent. May we entertain a motion?
Yes, so I will, uh,
Thank you.
Move that we authorize, can you hear me?
Yes.
I move that we authorize the city, the city manager to execute five easements and one license related to trail access, maintenance and agricultural access, existing water lines and future park planning at the Johnston House property.
Second.
Excellent. Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruddock?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Well done, everybody. Thank you for all making this happen. Great, great project. Great win-win, win. All right, we're moving to item three B, uh, twenty twenty measure D allocation transfer.
Good evening, council. Um, Mr. Mayor, I've been, uh, watching your interesting meeting and, um, it's kind of hard to follow what you just did with, uh, this item before you, measure D transfers. Uh, this is an item that, uh, you looked at a year ago and it appears to be a, possibly a trend in terms of your processing of measure D. We have a very brief presentation. Um, just for the highest level background, measure D is the city's population growth control ballot measure. And it allows for a one percent annual population growth with a half percent bonus in the downtown area. And, um, there's a process whereby allocations are, um, given out for, uh, new housing units each year. And we are at the point this year where we have run out of, uh, allocations for outside the downtown area. This happened, um, in the spring when, uh, we, we took the item to the planning commission. And the city council has discretion to consider transfers of, uh, base downtown allocation, allocations to, um, projects proposed for outside the downtown area. Your, um, consideration of this is through resolution. We, um, worked on that last year. You approved a process for, um, setting up this discretionary consideration. I'm just, I, in brief, uh, comparing what you did, uh, last year with what, uh, is before you tonight. Uh, last year, the total allocations were seventy-one. And at this time when we came to see you, uh, all of the outside downtown allocations had been used. That was twenty-four. And the allocations for downtown, um, none of them had been used. None of those twenty-three. I still transferred twelve allocations. At the time, we had in hand about half a dozen proposed accessory dwelling units. And again, that's a story for whoever looking at this again. On, you gave us a, a little bit of extra room in case we had a few more applications. Of the twelve that were transferred, ten were used. This year's different. We had, um, we're really happy to tell you first off that, uh, you, you have thirteen of the downtown base allocations. Um, they went to projects in the downtown area. Uh, two of those for, were for accessory dwelling units in downtown. And then five of them went to a mixed-use project over on, and for Isma Street that is going through a planning commission and architectural advisory committee process. And, uh, six of them went to a project that we're anticipating an application for at Main and Kelly. Uh, so what that means is having, um, allocated all twenty-three of the, uh, measured certificates outside downtown, that there's really only ten that are available to potentially transfer. And that's, um, all of a sudden in July, a whole bunch more applications came in. We, we were very surprised to see, uh, a total of sixteen accessory dwelling units being applied for, for these, these ten allocations. So again, it's really about accessory dwelling units. The, um, the intent, um, last year was based on, uh, the city's recently adopted, uh, December twenty eighteen accessory dwelling unit ordinance that, that made it easier to process them and was within, um, the realms of, of really, I think, a lot of our comfort zones in terms of, of how, how they would be processed. Any, um, we might end up having, they are, et cetera. But state law that came on, um, became effective, uh, January first of this year, really even further opened it up. And, uh, we do get inquiries about accessory dwelling units now almost every single day. So what we have been telling these applicants through this entire period since, uh, these, these, uh, started coming in, in April was that this is a discretionary item for city council. We cannot guarantee that any would be transferred. We could show them what, what you had done last year. That was a first time. It was a one-off and, um, you'd only use the process once. And, uh, any feedback that you have about the process in looking at it again this year, especially in that, um, the, the math around it is quite a bit different than it was a year ago. And that is all I have for presenting. I think that you've, you've been through this before. You understand it. I do, I do know that there are some folks here today who are watching, and I'm not sure if it's a public comment, but they wanted me to, uh, confirm that, of course, the, the mayor would entertain public comment should, uh, should be an opportunity for them to, to make.
Absolutely, absolutely. And yes, we have been through this once before. So, uh, I appreciate the presentation. Appreciate the understanding. Appreciate the staff report. Uh, I'm psyched to see that there were thirteen units that we knew about that were done in Half Moon Bay downtown. That's always a good thing as we're focusing on the downtown core. So that's good. Um, and I'll open it up to council for any clarifying questions before we go to public comment. All right, uh, let's move to public comments. Is there any public comments on this topic?
Uh, I do have one. Uh, I do have one. Larry?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Go for it, Larry.
I just wanted to add, uh, some flesh to the, uh, mysterious applications you get. Um, I, Half Moon Bay has always been a special place. I lived there in the seventies and I moved away, but I got a house that I still have. And I would like to come back to Half Moon Bay periodically and, and contribute to it and be part of it. I hope you would approve the, the transfer of these. Uh, my place particularly, it's in Arlita Park. It's close to downtown. It's not going to be used as a rental for strangers or outsiders. This is going to be a place where I come back and can be part of the town again. Um, so I, I hope you would approve this transfer.
Larry, thank you for, uh, talking to us and letting us know.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other public comment on this?
I don't believe there are any other comments, Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Uh, let's bring it back to council and, and this is one of those ones. I feel like we, Debbie, I, I feel like I'm just going to come straight to you. You, you know this topic extremely well and let's just get some perspective.
You're muted, Debbie.
I, I have a, a couple of policy-related questions. Um, now, years ago, many years ago, we had a discussion, it was actually about Measure A and not Measure D, as I recall, um, about whether or not we allow rollovers. In other words, um, could we roll over the downtown ones to the next year and sort of build up a reservoir of, uh, Measure Ds for, you know, like, that could be used for larger downtown projects? Um, alternatively, could the city actually retain some of the downtown ones itself for, like, deep restricted affordable housing projects or to pass to a, an affordable housing nonprofit? Asking these questions doesn't mean necessarily I won't support the transfer, but I'm trying to get at these bigger policy issues. It seems to me we decided against rollovers, but I think Jill probably has a, a good grasp of that.
Good questions. Let's see what we got.
Should I, should I wait or should I pop?
Oh, no, please. Let's, let's address it. Yeah.
And Catherine and I, um, had a little email exchange about this today. I think you've got something in there, uh, Councilmember Reddick, that we, we need to do more research. But there's, there's something to that could be related to the code allowance right now that allows for phasing. And so we need to do more research. This is a tricky area. Really no, um, because ballot language, you can't really do anything about. But the ordinance language has more flexibility. We just need to make sure that we're honoring the ballot language in, in term, in terms of changes that might be made to the ordinance language. Um, but the phasing allowance could open the door for the kind of thing you're talking about. Uh, rollovers, we, we don't, it, it's not set up that way right now, but, um, possibly, um, presumptuously saving them in advance as you would for a phased, um, subdivision is one example. It isn't the same thing as you're talking about, but we'll, we can do research. So I really, um, excited to hear this new idea tonight.
I know you're full, so I'm not going to ask you to look into it right now. Um, we have, they, they, I know there's some other issues simmering, um, but I just wanted to throw that, that question out there.
We would like very much to work on Measure D at the right time. And so it's, it's good to hear from council tonight to understand what you're interested in.
Um, but that said, you know, I, I've been very reluctant about transfers. But, uh, I, I think since most of these are ADUs, and while ADUs are not deep restricted, they're smaller and they are relatively more affordable. And we, we did get some Measure Ds allocated to downtown. I want to be clear though, that I, that people need to be ready to build. If they're not, and you discussed this in your staff report, then just wait until January. Wait until you're ready. Don't come forward for a Measure D allocation, you know, to hold on to it and, and wait. I'm not in favor of forwarding of your D allocations. Um, so people got to be ready to go. That's important to me. You mentioned the staff report encouraged them to, like, be ready, but I think we need to just say you have to be ready. And that may have done what we want, but.
And anything else before we move on to Mr. Rarback?
Last year, I really felt blindsided by the September, uh, announcement about the, uh, transfers. I, and I announced publicly then, and I want to reaffirm now, that I don't think that we should, uh, discourage, uh, downtown, uh, building. I really think that the council has made a priority of housing in the downtown. Uh, I've been trying to get a really affordable or extremely low-income housing in the downtown unsuccessfully so far, but, uh, uh, Measure D is a growth control ordinance, which I'm in favor of. Uh, it was actually instituted by, uh, Debbie Reddick. And I don't think that we should, uh, take away downtown allocations to go outside the, uh, that area. So I am not going to support this transfer. Thank you.
Excellent. And Councilwoman Penrose?
Yeah, um, part of me agrees with, uh, Councilmember Rarback, uh, but, but I am going to support this. And my reason for supporting it is simple. Um, right now, there are no applications for Measure D allocations, which we have to transfer. They don't exist. So, uh, what you're talking about is depriving other citizens in our town who live outside of the downtown core but are just as valued as citizens of the ability to use a Measure D certificate. So I am in favor of doing the transfer. Although, I have to say, I agree with Councilmember Reddick. I'd like us to look at this phasing in or a way of rolling over so that we can keep some, as many Measure D allocations as possible in the downtown core.
Very good.
See what I'm saying?
I, I personally do. I think Jill does. I think that's fairly, yeah.
I do. Um, you're the mayor. I just, there's, I, if it's okay, I would like to clarify something about,
Please, please.
availability of certificates. So I'm going to share my screen again. Um, can you see that now?
Not quite yet.
Not quite yet. Okay, hang on one more click.
Oh, there we go. Got it.
There we go. Okay. Just to make sure everyone is clear that the, um, it's only the downtown base allocations that are allowed to be transferred. None of the bonus allocations can be transferred. There remains 23 bonus allocations available. Should a project come in, um, between now and the end of the year in the downtown area, it could qualify for those. We're not aware of anything of that size. Uh, we could imagine, um, a couple, uh, small projects that might need a handful and there would be adequate capacity for them. And we just wanted to reassure you about that.
Good. That's a good clarifying point. Uh, very good. Um, Deb, uh, Councilwoman Penrose, anything else before I move on to Vice Mayor Brownstone?
No, that's all.
Okay, very good. Uh, Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yeah, I think in terms of how the process exists now, I agree with Councilmember Pen, Penrose. This seems fair. And hopefully in the future, we can, you know, further figure out ways to incentivize more units downtown, take up those permits. But for now, this seems fair, you know, we were able to get more than we expected than last year and, um, I think it's fair to others to, uh, allow those outside of city limits.
Okay, very good. And then for myself, Jill, I, I have one clarifying question. So just, just to make sure, uh, it is my understanding that these units are not available for short-term rentals. Is that correct?
That is how the city's ordinance is working now. Yes, that's correct.
So, so these must be used kind of what, as, as Debra or Councilwoman, uh, Penrose was saying, you know, for more like, let's just call them affordable-ish housing, uh, because they're not full houses. They're ADUs. But that would be the technical eh, term, uh, depending on how they actually sell and what they rent for.
Yeah, there, and by the way, the, the range on these is 250 to 1,000 square feet. So they're, they're smaller than any of them, the homes that we've been looking at.
Okay. Yeah, and, and, and based on that information, I mean, from, from my perspective, uh, we, you know, we're here to try to help, um, people affordably live in Half Moon Bay. And although I agree, you know, it's not in our downtown core, all the different pieces of where we exactly want it, but kind of what, as to what Councilwoman Penrose said, having it, uh, in the community is still valuable. Uh, and therefore, you know, I, I, I'm going to, I'm going to support it, but I, I, I agree with the longer-term implications of how we need to look at this from a, uh, policy standpoint. And again, I, I couldn't agree more with Councilwoman Reddick. This is not the right time to maybe dive into that. Uh, we have, we have some big issues with the LCP that we're going into and I want to appreciate that time and make sure that we separate it out. But I would like to, uh, in the future, bring that back to council at some point where we can discuss that and figure out what our overall game plan is so we don't keep running into the same situation. Uh, and with that, is there any other comments before we entertain any motions? Okay, may we entertain a motion?
Yeah, I will move that we adopt a resolution approving a transfer for 2020 of 10 town, of 10 downtown base Measure D allocations comprising all of the downtown base allocations remaining as of September 2020 to be used for accessory dwelling units proposed outside of the downtown area, prioritized according to affordability and readiness.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And Jessica?
Councilmember Rarback?
No.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
Motion carries for one.
Okay. And, and I, I do want to just lastly, before we move on to that one, I, I do want to stick, uh, stick with what Debbie Reddick said, Councilwoman Reddick, that we do want them to be shovel-ready, uh, in the ideal. Uh, Jill, just in terms of that aspect of it. All right, moving on to item 3C, Sustainability Implementation Program Update.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and take this one. Good evening again, um, city council and community members. Thank you so much for having me. I'm Jennifer Chong. I'm the Public Works Program Manager. Um, I recognize the late list of the, the lateness of the hour. So I just want to say thank you for, um, providing us with this opportunity to bring this item forward and build on some of the really positive conversations the city council has had tonight, um, around the idea and the concept of sustainability. I am going to share my screen. Just give me one second. Okay. Okay. Um, and so the city council saw a very similar slide to this earlier on this evening when Veronica was presenting on the disposable foodware ordinance. So I won't, uh, reiterate these points again, but I do want to just mention that this past year, since we first adopted the Sustainability Implementation Plan back in November, has been tremendous, um, tremendously challenging and, you know, tremendously, um, rewarding at the same time. Uh, despite all the many challenges that the city has faced, both, um, because of COVID and many other things, there have been actually many accomplishments that I think the city council should be very proud of, um, in addition to the community. And so if the council and the community will indulge me, I just want to highlight some of these accomplishments that have occurred in the last year because of the city council's commitment to, um, the sustainability priority and making sure that this is something that staff continues to have the resources to work on. So in the world of grants, uh, we've already talked about the beverage container redemption pilot project. Um, but we also had a 60,000 grant from the San Mateo County Office of Edg, um, Office of Sustainability that allowed us to do some really targeted, extensive outreach with some of our unrepresented community members around the issue of climate action and adaptation. And this is really going to inform the city's first climate and action and adaptation plan that we continue to work on. Uh, we also received a $10,000 grant fairly recently that is going to help us develop a new program, um, that will help us collect cigarette butts and make sure that they're recycled. So again, they're not going into the waste stream. Uh, for awards, you've heard about our two beacon awards that we're extremely excited about, um, and, you know, hoping that the council will be able to participate in that ceremony and enjoy the fruits of their labor. But we also did get the lead platinum certification this year as well for the, um, Half Moon Bay Library, which is no easy feat. So a huge accomplishment again for this council and for this community. Uh, just tonight, you all took two huge actions for, under policies and ordinances, um, banning those single-use plastic bottles at parks and beaches. Uh, and you also introduced that new disposable foodware ordinance and you took the stance to go first before the rest of the county. So really paving that way and staying true to your commitment to be a leader in this industry and in this county. Um, and something that did not come across, um, you know, wasn't presented to the, um, to the council, but it's still something that the council should be proud of is that we did adopt a sustainable purchasing and practices po, policy internally that was included as attachment to, to the staff report. And this is really, um, staff's commitment operationally to make sure that we walk the walk while, you know, we continue to talk the talk and ask the, the community to follow, follow suit. Um, and in addition to all of those, um, really great milestones, we have continued to offer quality education outreach and events. We transitioned our Earth Day event into an online virtual Earth Year campaign, um, that Veronica has done an amazing job of keeping up with. We, um, made a whole new website for sustainability resources with, um, quirky key, uh, with these quirky signs that people can use to access it, um, remotely. We started the Poplar Beach Pack It In, Pack It Out, No Litter Campaign, recognize we still have a long way to go, but, you know, it's a first start. It's a first step and we're excited about that. Um, and in addition to that, we continued to, you know, build partnerships with the various organizations in the county and offered really amazing events. We had a tire recycling event, an HHW recycling event, two e-waste events, a fix-it clinic with the library, paper shredding events, and we had compost giveaways. And so again, just, um, with all of the negativity and all of, um, the reasons to get down about this year, hopefully this, um, is kind of a beacon of light that shows that this was still a positive year and there was a lot that was done, especially in the realm of sustainability. Um, and that's definitely a result of the council's commitment to keeping this on the forefront and supporting, supporting these efforts. So with those acknowledgements, moving forward, um, there's still a lot of work to do. And so staff is doubling down on the Sustainability Implementation Plan and we have made some significant updates to this second version of the, um, SIP that we hope the council, um, will like. Uh, to start, we did include a more robust introduction and overview of what this document is, how it aligns with the state, um, you know, why it's important and what the goals of the Sustainability Implementation Plan is as a whole. Uh, we restructured the document to highlight our accomplishments from previous years as well as to highlight programs and projects, uh, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a bit. And then perhaps most significantly, we included a ranking system this year that assigned a resource level. Um, we hope that this helps, uh, for transparency, both for the council and for the community to understand how we prioritize things or why we move things where we think they can fit, um, just, uh, based on the resources that we anticipate will be available to us in the coming years. And so, um, tonight we are presenting a four-year Sustainability Implementation Plan. And so um tonight, we are presenting a four-year Sustainability Implementation Plan. Um, so quickly, the SIP goals, I just wanted to put these up there in case um folks did not get a chance to review the attachment. But these are the goals that we are hoping to accomplish with our sustainability programs as a whole. Um, we want to be a leader, we want to um lead by example, which means, you know, policies, ordinances, projects. In every aspect of what we do, making sustainability, I think as uh Mayor Eisen said, part of our brand. Um, and in addition to looking internally to see what we can do, we want to, you know, support our community and empower them to take those changes as well. So provide those opportunities at home, at school, at work, and in the community to practice, um, practice what we preach and vice versa. Um, and then definitely, especially with recent events, um, identify, identify and prepare our community for the effects of climate change. Because it is real, and we're seeing the effects of climate change on the coast side more and more every day. So those are the goals, and that's overarching what we're trying to do with all of the programs and all of the projects that we have identified in this document. Um, so in regards to just reorganizing the Sustainability Implementation Plan, we have three sections. Again, we have the accomplishments, um, we have our programs and our projects. And council might recognize these um, these categories from the capital improvement program. Uh, we recognized when we were, when we were reflecting on last year's SIP. That many of the things that council has already done in past years before we even had sustainability as a priority. Were not represented in the SIP. And these are ongoing efforts that every year require resources and attention to make sure that they are available to the community. And so we created that program section to represent those annual ongoing efforts that we know the community and the council love. Um, and then we created the project sections to be some more, um, more of those one-time projects. Uh, to get something started that probably will result in a program, and that will continue to increase our presence and sustainability. Uh, one thing I do want to point out about this revised version is that we did remove the policy category. But everything that was housed under the policy category was integrated into the projects in the program section. So um, we didn't lose any of the council's initiatives or any of the councils and communities' requests, we just moved them around a little bit. Um, and attachment three to your staff report provided all of those items in addition to the years that they were allocated to. Uh, so really quickly about the ranking and the scheduling, um, every effort, every initiative was uh given a ranking on a scale of one to three. And was provided with little leaf marks, and the number of leaf marks tells you, you know, what we think at this time. Um, that that effort is going to take in regards to staffing resources, with level ones being less resources required. And level threes being fairly extensive undertakings like the cap on Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. Uh, we also did identify certain projects that we think will probably require an additional pot of funds. Um, something like a disposable or a reusable foodware pilot project. Will probably require some additional funds and allocations in order to provide, you know, whether they're mini-grants or provide materials. Um, and so those were marked as well when we, when, you know, in instances that it was applicable. Um, and so using our best judgment and our best guess, these were some of the emphases that we um thought that the council. And that the community were most interested in us focusing on for this fiscal year. Um, the first was maintain the current programs. The last thing that we want to do is regress and go backwards. And so first and foremost is making sure that we continue to offer all of the services that we've worked very, very hard. To, you know, build into the fabric of our operations. And so that's first and foremost. But in addition to that, um, we know that the council and the community is very interested in completing our first cap. Um, we have two, two grants that we need to deliver on to make sure that they don't take that funding away. And so we figured that's um a high priority. Uh, we've heard from the community and the council how important it is that we take care of our beach. And so finding some way to address the litter and the education portion at Poplar Beach was something that we thought was important for this year. Um, we want to continue to move forward on the disposable foodware ordinance. We know that the council is still waiting for us to come back with some reach codes, and so we put that on the priorities for this year as well. Um, and then something that we haven't talked about as much, but we're going to have to in the coming, um, the coming months. Is getting ready to comply with SB thirteen eighty-three, which is a law from the state. That has some uh, some hefty food recovery requirements. Um, and these are just, you know, a highlight of some of the, the things that we are planning to emphasize this year. There's a lot more in the actual document itself, which I'm happy to bring up if, um, we would like to discuss that further. But these were, I think, the tier, tier three, tier two items that um are going to be the heavy lifts for staff this year. And with that, um, happy to take questions, comments, um, really looking forward to getting the council's feedback. And again, thank you so much for this opportunity to provide this update.
Great update, thank you so much. So it's, it's great. Uh, let's bring it back to council, uh, for any clarifying questions, we'll open it up to the public for public comments afterwards. Are there any clarifying questions? Do we have any public comment? Okay, I don't believe I see any, so.
Uh, yeah, I have a clarifying question.
Please.
Jennifer, uh, on the reach codes, are you going to be working with Peninsula Clean Energy?
So uh Veronica has been doing a lot of, um, has been compiling a lot of reach codes, so we have been in contact with PCE. Um, oh, John, did you, did you want to hop in on this one?
Um, particularly, but I'll, I'll. The, the bottom line, um, council member is, is, um, we're certainly gonna look across the board at, at what other jurisdictions have done in the area. What's, um, what, what Peninsula Clean Energy is, is recommending. And what we envision coming back sometime later in the year. Um, with a, with probably a, a, a series of some decision points for the council to make. That we can then um put together an ordinance uh with this. I, I think that, that um, you know, we have to be cognizant of the fact that the, that I think the coast side is a different environment. Than what um the other areas have in terms of uh, you know, our issues related to power outages. Um, our uh relative uh separation from the rest of the world at times. And I, you know, so I think there has to be some outreach, there has to be a conversation. And, and I know when we had the PSPS, there were a lot of people who were very happy to have gas appliances. Um, still in their homes um over electrical, and I think we've got to do some outreach um with regard to that. And figure out what's the best cap sort of uh toolbox that we can create for the coast side. But we need to look at what others are doing and what the recommendations are coming, so we will, we will bring that back to the council. Um, in a, in a, in a, in a way that you can, I think, as a whole, make some decisions and let the community know what's up.
Thank you. I, I encourage you to, to think uh in a really green way about that.
All right, do we have any pub? Oh, go ahead, the Councilwoman Ruddock?
Oh, not clarifying, I forgot about the public time.
Oh, no, no, I'm just trying to move us through, yeah, yeah. Um, is, is there any, is there any public comment on this?
I don't. Any hands raised, Mayor?
Good, okay, so let's bring it back to council, Councilwoman Ruddock, please.
I, I think the work that staff is doing is, is great and um useful, it's a useful tool. Um, I just wanted to point out that I, I saw an article that I'll share with you, that I read recently about. It was about using um wastewater treatment plants to also process food waste. And it's, it's kind of technical, I can't really explain it here, but uh they think it's like the next frontier in complying with, you know, reducing. Food waste, so potentially, you know, it might be, you know, moneymaker for our wastewater. You know, boards and things like that, so I'll share that if I can.
Thank, please do, uh, if I could, Jennifer had just sent a note to say, you think we can start talking to Sam? Is this something that Sam could do? So um, I, I, I'll, I'm gonna, you know, that'll be on the list of conversations um that we have with their staff. And, and to see um what that, you know, whether, whether the current setup would allow that to occur. Even with that, with, you know, kind of look at her, where that goes and what's going on, but.
I think it's like, it's about using unused digesters or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, we're very concerned about how the thirteen, or the thirteen eighty-three or whatever, that, that, those provisions with the organics. And all that are going to be addressed, so we're gonna have to look at, at various ways, and that's certainly one that we should be looking at. And I've also enjoyed the conversations regarding the COVID testing. Um, you know, at the, from the, from the sewer F one up too, in a, in a, in a weird sorted way, I guess.
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, I keep thinking I should talk to Keisha about whether they have results yet from Stanford. I'm, I'm sure they'll release them in a, in the way they feel is the most responsible.
Uh, very good. Anything else, Councilwoman Ruddock? All right, beautiful. Uh, Councilmember Rarback?
No, I don't have anything else, I just was interested in the reach codes and I hope, I hope something good comes of it, that's all.
No, oh, oh, absolutely. Uh, Councilwoman Penrose?
No, just a comment that Jennifer and the rest of the team have done a wonderful job. Thank you.
Excellent. And uh Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yeah, thanks Jennifer, I think it's great, and should we ever get our schools open the way they used to be? And kids coming in, I'd love to see more coordination, you know, with the next generation coming up. Uh, you know, where their energy is and, you know, future of the city and how they can participate more actively in some of these programs. But that'll probably have to wait till next year.
No, it's a good point though, but when the time is right, absolutely, get this, get the, get the talent involved. So, I mean, uh, my big thing here is, I remember discussing this maybe at the start of the year when we're trying to figure out. I think we were gonna hire a consultant to do this SIP, and we got staff to do it instead. And I, I couldn't be more happy with what it, what it shows, uh, the way you prioritized it, uh, the way it's done. Uh, and the projects that are in there, what you all have accomplished. I'm, I'm excited to continue that momentum forward, but I'm, I'm appreciative, uh, and I'm, I'm very excited to, uh. To move this along and go into the next phase of it. Again, we're gonna look at plastic water bottles at some point in our future uh as well. And trying to get those completely eliminated from Half Moon Bay. Uh, that's, that's like, you know, I didn't necessarily see that in this report. Per se, but I still want to throw that out there, and I know that's something that seemingly other council members are interested in as well. If not more so than even myself. Uh, so just uh want to throw that out there as something as well, then maybe throw in the plan moving forward. But um, go ahead, uh, Vice Mayor.
You know, just, no, yeah, I had done, no, I, I, I want to ask one, one last thing, I'd love to get recovery back here sometime. To try and understand where all our garbage and recyclables go. Remember how China wasn't gonna take it anymore and we needed to shift? Kind of wondering how we make best use of our recyclables if, I mean, I think folks are hungry to do the right thing. But it was always kind of left a little bit of mystery around that and how landfills were going and whether or not we can actually. Be more strategic around that, so.
Sure.
For another day, another day.
Yeah, is it, if, if there's a, we're always happy, they're always happy to come on, I, usually they're monitoring and watching this, uh, our council meetings anyway. So they, they're probably out there at, at, um, at some point, but they're always happy to do that. Um, I have, uh, really, I would advocate for when we can is uh getting the council actually out. Um, on the site, if you haven't been up to Ox Mountain, and then um at some point even maybe um, you know, taking the van tour. Going over to Newby Island, I, um, I think both of those would be extremely helpful um for just all of us to sort of get a perspective. Of, of how big that, you know, those operations are, what, what's going on, and um just, just what it all kind of means. And um, you know, which with, you know, and when COVID kind of releases us from, from uh, from lockdown. Then we can start to look at those things and um, and certainly schedule those, and they've always been open to um, to opening their, the gates there. To uh, to you individually or as a group.
Also a nice opportunity to uh thank them for stepping up a lot of their cleanup activities during some of these busy beach weekends. And now that they've got a manager who lives out here, you know, I'm sure he's got some interesting input about we can do some things more effectively, so that'd be great.
Cool, yeah, I actually met him, you know, I don't know if you remember last council meeting, I was bringing up the uh, the graffiti. Uh, on some of the garbage kid, the, one of the ones by Poplar Beach. He, he, I, I met him randomly like uh early in the morning, and he was out there fixing it. And he was like, hey, you see, we're listening. And I was like, man, what a, what a sweet thing to see, so I was just appreciative, so, very good.
Yeah, um, I'm wondering if uh any thought has been given to including a rain barrel program?
Like a rain barrel catchment program?
Right. I, I, you know, I think that fits into the idea of sustainability, certainly.
Oh, no question.
Uh, yes.
Yeah. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Sure, so we did include um that in one of the outer years, a rain barrel program generally comes with some type of reimbursement. Um, to encourage people to use them, so that's definitely something that we kept um what we used to call the bike rack. But now it's just been assigned to an outer year, it's something that we are planning on looking into, but um, just not, not this fiscal year.
I'm wondering if um that we might get coast side water involved in that.
Uh, when that, when, definitely when we look into it, I think that makes a lot of sense.
You know, boy, I don't want to keep this going, but as long as we're talking about water. And having access to healthy, clean water, which some of us can take for granted. But um certainly in a lot of the farmworker and Latinx communities, and this is a coast side issue. And so, you know, folks living on farms, um, a lot of the creek waters, it's not healthy water. And we have groups now delivering, you know, clean water in plastic containers. And so it's something we would have to do in collaboration, you know, with farmers and coast side generally. It's not just all in Half Moon Bay, city limits, but um the thought of having a lot of our neighbors and their kids. Not being able to feel comfortable drinking water is uh pretty terrible. So um, yeah, in terms of sustainability, it's a basic issue.
I, I, I was having this conversation with, with, I'm not sure, one of my, with Veronica or just, or Jennifer or both. But, you know, I, I think uh perhaps one of the greatest kind of environmental and, and social justice issues is the. Issue of the bottle of water and um, and the fact that folks are paying what they're paying for what is um relatively almost free. When it comes out of the tap, and so um, I, I, I definitely think that um one CCVD probably could be pushed to do more. Um, with that, but I think the city can also um can and should actually take probably a, a, a little more. Perspective on that issue, at least within our own city limits and within the CCVD district. It's um, you know, and it's, and I know there's, there's cultural issues there, there's historical, and there are some, you know, legitimate sometimes concerns. About where that water's coming from, but, but anything coming directly out of the tap. Um, is, is as good or better than what's coming out of the tap at the windmill, uh, water supply or whatever, and it's a lot cheaper.
And I agree, and it could definitely be worthwhile, uh, spending a little money for some more grant writer hours. Cause I'm sure there's some grant money out there that we can take advantage of, so that's an option.
Okay, no, good. All right, uh, I think those are great topics. No, I, I, I don't, I mean, unfortunately, I'm kind of trying to move us through, cause it's still late, but it's like. Would you like a motion? No, 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 but we should talk about this stuff, and that's the thing, I, I might be going too fast in some respects. Cause when we're talking sustainability, it's such a focus item uh for this council as a whole. And so um, you know, I, I, I don't mind sitting here, taking a little more time if we need to on this topic. I think it's great, great conversation.
I do like sustainable meetings, though.
I hear you, I'm trying. All right, how about if I move? Okay. To approve the updated Sustainability Implementation Plan contained in attachment one to this report.
Second.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes. All right, we are very well done. We are moving on to item three D, which is the minimum wage ordinance implementation. And I think I think the staff reports, yeah. Uh, go ahead. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll we'll keep our, uh, our comments very short. Um, I've got Victor Guypon, our community services analyst with me. He's our project lead on this, and, uh, he will start the presentation, which again, we will keep very brief. Go ahead, Victor.
Thank you, Matthew. Good evening, Mayor Eisen, members of the council. Happy to be here with you tonight. Uh, so I'll start off with a background and let me share my screen for the presentation. So as you all know, um, the city council made exploring the establishment of a local minimum wage, um, one of the top five priorities for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and directed staff to research what are the cities were doing. Put together the research and eventually come back to the council, um, which staff did, uh, at the December seventeenth, twenty nineteen council meeting. Staff presented all the information then. Um, and at that point, uh, council directed staff to come back with a draft, um, local minimum wage ordinance, uh, that would establish a fifteen dollar per hour minimum wage effective July one, twenty twenty. Following that meeting, staff came back, uh, on January twenty first, twenty twenty, uh, with the ordinance, uh, with the July one twenty twenty implementation date. Uh, and after some discussion, uh, council, um, ultimately made the decision to delay implementation of the ordinance until January one, twenty twenty one. And that ordinance was eventually, uh, sorry, I'm advancing slides. There we go. That ordinance, um, was eventually passed on February fourth, uh, twenty twenty. With the fifteen dollar per hour, uh, minimum wage, um, affecting, uh, all businesses within the city of Half Moon Bay, um, effective January one, twenty twenty one. Uh, with annual C P I increases, uh, based on the, uh, local consumer price index, uh, beginning on January one, twenty twenty two. And with that, I'll, uh, setting you sort of we keep it short, so I pass it off to Matthew now.
Thanks, Victor. So as as I'm sure you've heard and and we've talked about a lot in your meetings, uh, COVID nineteen and the shelter in place and different restrictions on businesses have had significant impacts on our businesses. Uh, I think it's disproportionately affected businesses here on the coast compared to some other places due to the types of industries that are most impacted, including tourism, restaurants, retail, uh, and small businesses in general, which are the bread and butter of the coast side. Uh, so we've been tracking this throughout the, uh, shelter in place and and the restrictions over the last several months. We've heard from businesses, we've had many conversations with the chamber, and there has been, um, a call by many of the businesses to postpone implementation of the, uh, minimum wage ordinance to give businesses more time to recover before having to pay the higher minimum wage. Just some context around this, um, the as you know, the state has a plan that ramps up every year, the minimum wage and built into that gave the governor the ability to postpone, uh, an increase at any time based on economic challenges. And that was considered earlier this year and ultimately, uh, the state decided that they would not postpone this year's increase. And so, beginning January first, twenty twenty one, uh, large businesses, businesses with more than twenty-five employees will increase to fourteen dollars an hour and small businesses with less than twenty-five employees will be at thirteen dollars an hour. Additionally, we know that many cities here on the peninsula and throughout the Bay Area and the state have their own local minimum wage ordinances. Uh, many have considered exactly what you're considering tonight. We're aware of two that postponed their implementation, uh, San Carlos and Hayward. Uh, but I will point out that theirs were set to take effect July first of this year. Both of them delayed theirs to January first of twenty twenty one. Several other cities considered it and decided not to change their implementation. So there are many, many cities within the county and within the Bay Area that will be increasing their minimum wage, uh, at the beginning of next year. Uh, as I've mentioned, we've heard from many businesses locally that are concerned and are are requesting that the council consider a delay. Uh, I'm sure we still have Crystal in here, who has been an advocate for those businesses and provided some great information to us. Yes, she just raised her hand. Thanks, Crystal. Uh, we've also heard from, uh, labor groups and other groups representing, uh, workers who are adamantly against delaying implementation. And, um, to to some degree, we're we're in a very similar place of discussion that we were earlier this year, uh, where businesses are concerned about the increase and the impacts that it'll have on their operations. And workers, of course, are struggling and desperate for, uh, more livable wages. And, uh, we just, uh, thought it would be important to bring this communication to the forefront and have this conversation and give businesses and, uh, workers an opportunity to share their thoughts and allow the council to consider this. Uh, part of the timing is if we move forward with implementation on January first. There is some work that we will need to do with staff to prepare, to do outreach and make sure that, uh, the businesses already comply. January first, and the businesses will appreciate, uh, some finality here either way, so that they can plan for the upcoming year. So with that, that's our report, and, uh, I know that there will be some public comment, and we've received quite a bit of public comments, uh, via email, which I believe the city clerk has shared with you, uh, from both sides of the issue. And, uh, we're happy to take any questions or provide any additional information. Thank you.
All right, very good. Uh, any clarifying questions before we open it up for public comment? I don't think so. I shouldn't be, really. Um, any public comment? I see Crystal in. Start off there. Uh, Jessica or somebody is
Are you ready for public comment?
Yes, yes, please.
Uh, Crystal, go ahead.
Thank you very much, council. Um, it's very appreciated that you were even willing to relook at this. Since it was set up not that long ago, it feels like why would we be revisiting this so soon? But obviously COVID has really put a real wrench in everything. Um, so I just wanted to let you know that, uh, the business community has appreciated uh, this coming back to the table. Um, I wanted to really emphasize the fact that our businesses have been hit very hard. Many of our businesses are tourism related, which, um, they were the ones that were opposed to the minimum wage increase. The first go round, and I will say that on average, their com- their comments were more like more uncomfortable. They were worried about what that was gonna do to their budget at the time. Uh, they were worried about how they were gonna maintain enough staff to provide good services and so on. Um, this time around, it's definitely different in that, uh, many of them have had to let the mass majority of their staff go. And it was really heartbreaking for them. And now they're trying to climb their way back to bringing that staff back. So a two dollar minimum wage increase, um, because most of our businesses fall in the under twenty-five category really hampers their ability to bring back, you know, ten to fifteen people. Um, it might bring it down to nine to twelve people that they're able to bring back. The PPP loans that a lot of people were able to get towards the beginning of the pandemic, uh, have mostly run out. Uh, in fact, I haven't heard from a single business that is still working off of PPP loans. Um, the rules for PPP continued to evolve, and many of them will actually have a part of that that they need to pay back, which was a shock to them. Uh, and then many of them took out the S B A idle loan to make, uh, ends meet and have to spend anywhere from a hundred and fifty thousand to a million dollars, depending on the business type. Um, and those loans are gonna be coming up for repayment starting in the summer of twenty twenty one. So an increase coming in January of twenty twenty one, even though they were, you know, up until this point expecting it, and I heard from a lot of businesses that, um, that they, you know, they had been, uh, gearing up for it. They understood it, they were ready for it, and then the pandemic has really just screwed it all up. So it is not with, it's with a heavy heart that the businesses are not able to, uh, give the employees a working wage, um, or a living wage, which we all agree is very high for our area. Um, and the businesses that can provide a larger wage, starting people at seventeen fifty, eighteen, upwards to thirty dollars an hour, depending on the specialty are doing that. So when I reached out to the businesses, half of the responses that I received was, we're already doing it. So this doesn't even affect us anyway. Um, but it is a very tipped scale. Those who can do it are doing it, and those who can't, this could lead to them, uh, either severely unable to bring back staff or require them to shut their door. Um, many businesses are currently being run by their owners. Their owners have had to take over running the front counter, and that is not sustainable for them. They are getting tired. We have businesses that are opting to retire years earlier than they had planned, because that's easier than dealing with this. Um, so I appreciate your time. I appreciate everything that you guys are doing. Um, and I do ask that if there's any way to delay the fifteen minimum, the fifteen dollar minimum wage to January twenty twenty two, um, that would already be in line with the big businesses, so it's no change for them. And for the small businesses, it gives them that that extra time to recover and help make our coast side and our half moon bay what we want to see it return to a thriving community. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. And you do you do such a great job speaking for the for the community of, uh, businesses here in Half Moon Bay. Appreciate your time and efforts.
And next we have Raina. Raina, go ahead.
Good evening, honorable city council members and staff. I'm Raina Lehman. I'm the director of, uh, community services for the San Mateo County Central Labor Council and a frequent visitor to Half Moon Bay. What an interesting agenda you had this evening. On behalf of the San Mateo Labor Council, our affiliates, members, and on behalf of all low wage workers in your city, we support implementation of the fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage on January first, twenty twenty one with no further extensions. As a council, you have researched, discussed, and debated this issue extensively. You have expressed strong and eloquent support for low wage workers while respecting the issues raised by Half Moon Bay businesses. You unanimously passed a minimum wage ordinance. And at their request, you gave local businesses more time, extra time, about nine months extra time to prepare. You crafted a unanimous compromise that is still relevant even in the face of our COVID world. I'm not the first to notice that these are not normal times, but there will be normal times again, and important decisions such as this will support the economic vitality and stability of your city now and in the future. COVID impacts are felt by all of us, and I do not minimize these impacts. But for the nine cities in San Mateo County, including East Palo Alto, which very recently passed their minimum wage ordinance, investing in the workforce has not been the cause of business failures, closures, or layoffs. Healthy businesses have adapted. You have the opportunity tonight to throw a lifeline to workers who do not have any alternatives. You can have an impact on the historic and pervasive inequality in our county and cities, including Half Moon Bay. You can make a low wage job a better job. You've heard all the cost of living and poverty statistics. You've heard a lot of information. You know fifteen dollars an hour is not enough to support a family. But it's a start, and it's a start I suggest you should not delay and that you should start now. Thank you so much for your consideration and leadership.
All right, Raina, thanks for expressing all that eleven this late at night and staying here to to do your piece. I appreciate the comments.
And next we have Mary. Mary, go ahead.
Thank you. I had something all written up that I wanted to say, but now I'm going off in a different direction, and I hope that's okay. I've never spoken before, so I just hope this is okay. The lady from the Chamber of Commerce was I mean, it really was moving to hear about the employers who have been hit so hard. And you know, I mean, it is really hard for them. But I'm gonna just use one example. My most favorite place in in the whole town is Tacaria Tres Amigos. I don't think they have more than twenty-five people. I love that place. But they don't pay health insurance to their workers. And a few of their workers got sick, and they didn't know about the federal law that an employer has to pay their worker two weeks if they've tested positive, if they show the symptoms or have they have to quarantine because exposed. I'm sorry, I'm really going off in a different direction, but I'm saying I love Tres Amigos. But they're an example of a of a really great business in Half Moon Bay that isn't taking care of their own people, and they could. I don't know how many of the other businesses that the Chamber of Commerce lady, I'm sorry, I wrote her name down, but I'll knock over the laptop if I look, try to find it. Uh, I have speaking about who I've just today was hearing real sad stories of some people who had yoga studios and stuff like that. But you guys know there's must be a way of finding out. How many are Tres Amigos that aren't even paying health insurance when they really had the money before the pandemic? And how many really really can't make it? There has to be a way that the government can figure stuff like that out. And I want to say, everybody was talking really wonderfully about the central workers, how important they are. Oh, my God. Well, it's the essential workers that are usually not getting fifteen dollars an hour. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Very good. Um, let's bring it back to council and, oh, uh, I'm sorry, there's another person.
Eric, go ahead.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Eisen, council members and staff. I'm Eric DeBode, and I'm the director of Abundant Grace, but I'm speaking personally tonight and not as a representative of my organization. And I want to express my support for your efforts in passing and implementing a minimum wage in our city of fifteen dollars an hour by January twenty twenty one. I don't think that implementation should be delayed. Uh, studies show that long term, the long term outcome of wage increases is that it stimulates the economy, that businesses benefit, because when people earn more, they spend more. Worker wages have been fairly stagnant for many decades, and we've watched wealth become more and more concentrated in the hands of a few. But is it, it's a sign of economic health when money circulates. It benefits workers, consumers, businesses, and the city. So I don't think we should delay this positive step any longer. And I think of Dr. King's statement that justice delayed is justice denied. And workers have been sidelined year after year since the nineteen seventies. Let's not forget that the majority of low wage workers are doubled and tripled up in housing in our city. There are families who are really struggling, are suffering, and being assured a living wage is long overdue. At Abundant Grace, we've paid fifteen dollars an hour to our job readiness participants. They work with us at the Full Circle Food Justice Program at Portero and Mabel Farm and with the Coastside Clean Team. We worked hard to raise those funds because it's the right thing to do. The impact has been that we've helped move probably over a hundred thousand dollars into local businesses over the past nine years. Similarly, uh, you all know about the Coastside Crisis Fund. And since March, Coastside Hope, Alice, and Abundant Grace raised over three hundred and seventy-five thousand, thanks to the generosity of many, many people in our community and a handful of foundations. We gave out financial We gave out financial grants to families, but we also purchased over one hundred thousand dollars worth of gift cards from several local businesses, which meant we were able to move that large amount of money into the local economy directly to those businesses during these critical months since March and the COVID crisis. So in conclusion, I I support the implementation of the fifteen dollar minimum wage ordinance in January twenty twenty one for the sake of our community, for the long-term health of our businesses, and for our hard-working, low-wage-earning neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. Thanks for all you do to the community as well.
Oh, next we have Karina. Karina, go ahead.
Hi, so I'm just a citizen. Um, I am neither a small business owner nor a worker, but I wanted to just add my sort of small additional voice here and echo what Eric just said. Little less eloquently, but, you know, though I completely agree, small businesses are critical to the soul and the character of Half Moon Bay and an essential part of what makes Half Moon Bay um special. I think so are citizens and the people who work in those businesses, and I think that paying a living wage to the community um is critical. I think that people working three to four jobs to make ends meet is unacceptable. Um, I think it contributes to inequality in our community, which ripples through public housing, uh, public health and education. And so I would just encourage you to not delay and to stick with it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Karina. Uh, very good. Uh, let's bring it back to council at this point and discuss this. We've we've been through this, um, you know, already once before, so I I I think we should be able to move rather quickly. Um, do you want me to go through each person? Does anybody want to start? Does anybody have anything to say?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, uh, before you do that, let's just, let's just make a quick, a quick around, um, just in case. Vice Mayor Brownstone, anything?
I appreciate the eloquence of all our speakers tonight. We've already talked this through, it's one of the most basic human dignity issues for me personally. Um, and I think it's been reflected in our council comments. And, um, so yeah, I'm ready to go along with the other nine cities here in our county and keep our current schedule.
Yeah, so, I mean, obviously, I just want to say I probably speak for the council on this one. We must at least be able to sympathize with the small businesses, and everybody says that, but none of us, or at least myself, I'm not a small business. And so saying it's one thing, um, you know, uh, I don't know what the small businesses are going through, and I appreciate that Crystal brings that that to us. Because, you know, Half Moon Bay is a bunch of small businesses, and we do need to do our part to support our business community as much as possible. Uh, you know, that being said, from, you know, fifteen dollars, you know, I I I was reading some of the comments from different people that sent stuff in, and Steve Booker was one in particular. Uh, he talked about, uh, you know, San Mateo County is the wealthiest and most expensive, is one of the most expensive and wealthiest counties in the United States, if not the world. Uh, you know, couple that with inequality, lack of affordable housing, global pandemic. Our our low-wage workers are in need of of support. I I just wish it wasn't one or the other, um, per se, because I do think it is hard on businesses. Um, and we have prepared them, which is great, and so I'm I'm totally happy to continue with it. But my my sympathy does go out, and I I really want to express that, because I do think that we're putting some businesses in a very tough position, and like like Crystal said, they might not be able to bring back the amount of workers they originally wanted to, to make their business successful as they make the trade-offs. But I still think it's the right direction to go in, uh, regardless. But I I just want to make sure that that's, um, expressed at least. That's all I got. We can make a motion, let's go for it.
Um, as um, as decided last spring and, um, passed the ordinance for increasing minimum wage in the city of Half Moon Bay.
And so I think, uh, so somebody else, we lost you for a second, Deborah.
Effective January twenty twenty one.
Perfect, perfect. We're good with that, Jessica?
Second.
Okay, excellent, excellent, and may we go through the roll call?
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Riddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Excellent, okay. Um, just in terms of continuing this meeting, so we're at eleven thirty. Uh, we have two more items. I think we can get through them rather quickly. Is is the is the will of the council still to go that direction?
Yeah, I'm I I'm ready to make a motion on the next item.
Uh, I'm 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 ready to entertain it, let's go.
Councilmember Riddick, we do have one hand raised.
Okay.
So if I could quickly just introduce the item, um, item three E is consideration of support for Proposition fifteen, which is the California Schools and Local Communities Funding Act of twenty twenty. Um, and then I will go ahead and take public comment, Crystal.
Thank you very much. Uh, I know that this is, you know, merely whether or not to publicly have support for Prop fifteen. Um, and the genesis of Prop fifteen is to get larger businesses like Disney and Chevron and those big boys to to pay the big money that their their lots are worth. Um, but I do think that it's worth noting that, again, Half Moon Bay is made up of small businesses, and small businesses are going to get the brunt of the property tax increases that happen to our residential or to our commercial buildings. Many of our buildings were purchased in the seventies, eighties, and nineties and are family-owned, so they have not been reassessed in a very long time. And so supporting this measure, uh, is going to allow the legislature to decide when and how quickly, um, their parcels were going to be assessed, and then they are going to pass those fees on to the small businesses. So, um, I know you as a group aren't, you know, saying that you're passing it or not passing it, but a vote in favor of Proposition fifteen is a vote against your small businesses that currently kind of are batting zero right now. They have not had any wins in this city for, uh, many, many, many months. Um, so if there's one small show of support that you can give them would be that you're not advocating for an increase in their rent within the next two to three years, when that is going to be very, very detrimental to them. Thank you.
That's a, it's a good tie-in, Crystal, and thank you, thank you for that. That's a good education. Um, from from for at least from my perspective, I haven't haven't looked at it that way. Um, all right, let's bring this to council. The item is, uh, item three E, consideration of support for Proposition fifteen, California Schools Local Committee Communities Communities Funding Act of twenty twenty. Um, to council.
The businesses, you know, subject to Prop thirteen, have not been paying their fair share toward public infrastructure, and our schools have suffered because of Prop thirteen. If we can do the split role and bring more money in for schools and infrastructure, that increases property values and tends to raise all boats. So, um, I think Prop thirteen was a distortion that had huge negative impacts and created a lot of inequalities uh, in the in existing neighborhoods. Somebody's paying two hundred dollars, somebody's paying, you know, two million dollars a block away. I I just think any changes we can make to Prop thirteen to more equitably equitably distribute the burden, I think we should do that. I'm in favor of moving this residence.
Very good. Anybody else?
I concur completely.
Yeah. Uh, good. Do you want to entertain a motion?
I moved that the council support Proposition fifteen, California Schools and Local Communities Funding Act on the November third, twenty twenty ballot. I just want to point out that Governor Newsom has thrown his weight behind it.
Second. Jessica?
Councilmember Penrose? Councilmember Penrose?
Let's, uh, where is she?
There she is.
I'm here, and I I don't know why you're not hearing me, but yes.
Okay, there we go, good.
Thanks. Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Riddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes, and I, you know, I I helped bring this to the council on this one. Um, and I I really do feel for the small businesses again, and I know, you know, it's going to fall on deaf ears because we haven't really done anything to support them per se. Um, and and that was an interesting perspective Crystal brought up about this, so. Uh, but I couldn't agree with Councilwoman Riddick more. We need to spread the equity of this out, um, to share the burden. Uh, so I I guess in some ways I'm I'm slightly apologetic um, that we haven't done more to support our local businesses through the actions we've taken, but I do still think it's the right thing to do.
I'd like to just point out, though, that our LCP update is going the direction of policies that support a more vibrant downtown, that will support our local businesses. So, you know, I'm definitely in favor of supporting local businesses, but I believe in, um, sharing the burden of taxation. I believe in paying our workers a fair wage so that, you know, everybody has a decent respectable piece of the plan.
Yeah, no, that's good, that's good. Um, excellent, we're moving on to item three F, League of California Cities Annual Conference Voting Delegate and Resolution Packet. I think we can move quickly through this.
Yeah, so as we do annually, um, we, the council needs to authorize a delegate to vote on the league's resolutions packets. Uh, this year, the league annual conference is being held virtually in October. So far, we only have Councilmember Penrose registered, so the council should select her as the voting delegate and then direct her on how to vote. There's one league resolution which would urge Congress to amend section two thirty of the Federal Communications Decency Act to limit the immunity provided to online platforms where their forums enable criminal activity to be promoted.
Great. Um, I can make a motion. Let's, let's, uh, well, let's, let's quickly go through the process just real quick, because just in case. So, and I'm happy to entertain the motion very quickly. Is there any public input on it, or any clarifying questions first? Any public input, uh, public comments? I'm so sorry, I'm losing it.
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, and, uh, please, Robert?
Yeah, I would like to move that we designate Councilmember Penrose as the city's voting delegate for the League of California Cities twenty twenty annual conference and to provide direction to Councilmember Penrose regarding the council's position on the twenty twenty annual conference resolutions packet.
Right, so we have to give her that.
So your motion would be to support the resolution?
Yeah, that's, I guess that's what we need to, you're you're you're.
And I move to, right, and we move to support the resolution as stated by our city clerk.
Awesome.
Okay.
That work?
Uh, good, good enough at this time of night, we'll go with it, yes, yes. Uh, are we cool with that, Jessica?
Yeah, so just to clarify, the motion is to select Councilmember Penrose as the voting delegate and to direct her to vote yes on the league's resolution.
Right, we, it's in the attachment, yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay, okay, we'll we'll go with it. I mean, that's what I'm assuming you're meaning here. So, all right, that is, that is the motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we need an alternate, or are we fine just with one person?
Uh, one is fine. Uh, we don't have any other council members registered at the moment, so.
Very good.
An alternate.
All right, so we've got a motion, we've got a second, and then may we, uh, go through the roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Riddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, well, I have to say, first of all, congratulations, council, that was, woo, we started at six P M. That was a lot of stuff to go through, um, and we can finish off the, uh, the council, and I see you got your hands raised. Councilwoman Riddick, I'll come right to you, but well done. That was a lot of topics, a lot of diversity of topics, and a lot of topics that, uh, have multiple sides being weighed on everything that we're talking about. Nothing was really that easy. So thank you all for doing the work, paying attention, and being, uh, ready to discuss everything.
Well, it was also a lot of, a lot of beneficial things for the community, right?
It was.
I mean, making important decisions in favor of our quality of life, right? So, good things.
Good. Are there any, are there any commission or committee updates? I'm hoping not. I just personally at this point, and then are there any future discussion, possible agenda items? You go ahead, please.
So, um, we all received a letter from, um, an attorney, Gary Patton about, um, issues relating to the general plan and having an open space and conservation element. And I know that staff has been working on a response, but since the letter was to the council, seemed to expect the council somehow to address this, and I was thinking it might be good to put this on our next agenda, to hear from staff and possibly to give direction, but but to get educated on the issues that are raised.
So, absolutely, I think that's brilliant.
So, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Riddick and, uh, City Attorney Angberg. So, the next meeting is a special meeting on the LCP. Uh, the two, I did, the item that you refer to is potentially not directly related to the LCP, but indirectly related. Would you like it on that agenda, or should we save it for October sixth? And Catherine, do you have any opinion on which would be more appropriate?
I'll, um, I I think we can put it on one of the, one of the agendas, but I want to discuss with, um, Jill or if she wants to hop in, whether she has a preference on one of the two, or we should be taken up afterwards um, because it relates to the general plan as opposed to the LCP.
Okay.
But we definitely hear you in terms of of the wanting the item to come back.
Okay, yeah, I don't think we need to discuss which one it is. Yeah, you guys determine and bring it to us, however, yeah, which is.
Later date, okay, thank you.
Good, good question. Go ahead, Mr. Rarback, or, sorry, Councilmember Rarback?
Uh, I don't know when is the appropriate time, but as we heard from Claire, Caltrans has a project definitely would affect Half Moon Bay uh, with these signs that they're proposing. And I would love to hear from them, uh, because I think they need to hear the council's, uh, input.
Talk about how, uh, how long it would take to go over nine, two eighty and ninety-two and all that.
No, this has to, this is an, a project that I think came out of the blue. It's to put up a total of eight signs, three of them in Half Moon Bay that, uh, would tell us the travel time to Moss Beach or whatever.
Right.
You know, my, obviously, my personal opinion is that this is really inconsistent with, uh, uh, the, uh, I forget the word that Jill likes to call, uh, pound yard.
Right, right. There was an article with pictures of the sample signs and what they looked like. Correct, correct. Whether they were attractive or really fit into the coast side. That's what Harvey's talking about, right, Ar? Yeah.
We, we can ask Caltrans to come and and make a presentation at the October sixth meeting. Uh, we can't guarantee that they'll come and do it, but we will push on them to do it.
Perfect.
Okay.
Perfect. All right, any other future discussion topic? All right, any other future discussion topics? Excellent. Uh city council reports? Good, I'm gonna quickly. And then to adjournment, well done, everybody. Long meeting, lots of topics. Uh I I I agree. Um
Well, man, thank you.
Oh, man. And uh thank you so much for your time and energy. Very, very much appreciated. Have a great night, and uh thank you. Enjoy the clean air.
Everyone.
Yeah.
Yes.
Breathe, breathe fresh air.
La vista.
Bye.